We do have a quorum, so I'm actually going to call the meeting to order. In order to participate tonight, you need a purple, purple voting card. You get that out at the registrars. If you don't have that, you've got to go out and register. You will need this card in order to participate as a voter. Rules are the same tonight as they were last night. The bleacher section immediately to my right is for non-voters. Anyone who's a non-voter has got to be seated in that section. And conversely, if anybody in that section that's a voter, you ought to move to someplace else on the floor. We're going to start tonight at Article 25. Just a couple of quick announcements. Obviously, no smoking. Please shut off your cell phones or your paging devices. Already told you about the non-voting section. We're under the same rules of procedure that we were last night, and I've walked you through those last evening if you were here. There are some articles that I won't read in their entirety that will be taken up this evening, and my goal is to see if we can't finish the warrant this evening. I think we can. Article 26, I won't be reading in its entirety. Article 31, 26 is a zoning bylaw. Article 31 on cemetery rules and regulations. Article 35, which is a proposed charter amendment, creates a wastewater commission. So if you have an interest in that one, make sure you've looked through it. I'm not going to read it in entirety. Similarly, Article 36, which is a capital outlay charter amendment, another important article, and so if you have an interest in that one, make sure you've read through that as well. Okay, before we get started with Article 25, I'm going to recognize Mr. McManus for the purpose of announcement.
Coming to the -- hello? Nope.
There we go. Coming to the microphone to ask you to rise for a moment of silence. Most recently, we've lost two longtime town officials. First, Mr. Bob Marshall, who lived in town and had been actually a teacher in the Chatham Schools for 30 years and had been a member of our Energy and Utility Committee, had put in a lot of good work in helping develop our solar farm out at the landfill. And the second person is Ed Jaworski, longtime teacher and counselor. We all in memory of his knew him as a fellow who helped us down at the hardware store in Harwichport. He was a member of both the Harwich School Committee and one of the founding members of the Montomay School Committee, if I can have a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McManus. Okay, so we're on Article 25. Again, this is a zoning bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw. It's under Section 325-16, Table 2, add a new subparagraph regarding retaining walls and septic systems. It's an amendment to the table adding a note to the front, side, and rear setbacks. They may be reduced to 10 feet for a septic system pursuant to that section, and adding a new subsection, retaining walls for septic systems, to read as follows. That one I'll read through. Retaining walls for septic systems, the provisions of 325-17 notwithstanding, on an improved parcel of retaining wall associated with installation of a septic system, a mounded septic system, for example, required by the Board of Health or by Title 5 shall be set back no less than 10 feet to any lot line. So that's newly proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw. Do I have a positive motion?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as presented in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 25 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. I'll now ask for the planning board report. Mr. Joyce, Chairman of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Planning Board held a duly posted notice public hearing on this proposed zoning amendment on March 12, 2019, and the board voted unanimously to recommend this article to the town meeting. Our town planner -- Yep. Our town planner will explain this when she returns.
Hi, good evening, Charlene. Okay, so Ms. Greenhouse, who's our town planner, is available for questions. Is there any debate on this article? Any questions? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion before you is the article be accepted and adopted. The zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 26. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw under floodplain regulations. This is one I indicated I would not read in its entirety. I have a main motion.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Accept, amend all references to Section 325-109 be changed to Section 325-108.1.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded under Article 26. It's a motion to adopt as printed with one change, the reference to 325-109, that's Section 325-109, be changed to 325-108.1. Mr. Joyce, Planning Board report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Planning Board held a duly posted and notice public hearing on this proposed zoning amendment on March 12, 2019, and the board voted unanimously to recommend this article to the town meeting.
Any presentation of this article or anything further from the Planning Board? No, but you're here for questions. Same thing, Charlene, if there are questions. Okay, do I hear any questions or debate on Article 26? Hearing none, I'm going to put it to a vote. Motion before you is did it be accepted and adopted with that one numbering change, 109 be 108.1. Zoning bylaw amendment requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 27. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sufficient sum of money for the updated town's local comprehensive plan and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted to fund update for a local comprehensive plan and the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 27 is accept and adopt. The sum is $200,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Sally Urbano from West Harwich.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. The local comprehensive plan is an important planning tool for the town. Supporting this article gives us, the citizens, a chance to participate and help guide Harwich in the best possible way. We can craft a plan that will address our collective vision for the future. To be certified through the Cape Cod Commission, the local comprehensive plan must include a section on historic resources, and it must be consistent with the regional policy preservation goals, including a listing of the historic assets and action plans to preserve them. Harwich continues to face a collective of historic assets, including demolitions. I'm sure that you can cite some concerns within your own neighborhood. I'm familiar with my neighborhood, for example, where there is a project in West Harwich currently before the Planning Board that will demolish the historic Captain Baker home to develop an approximately $7,400 square foot general store in the middle of an eminent National Register District. As a town, we can grow and encourage economic development and business. We can support the village concepts and historic assets without losing our character. This can and is being done in other places, and the local comprehensive plan, which should include the historic preservation plan, can help guide the process. So my question, if this article is funded, does the Planning Board and the Planning Department plan to hire a historic preservationist to create a historic preservation plan? And if not, would they consider doing so? Thank you.
Question for either the Planning Board or the Planning Department. I see the town planner, Charlene Greenhouse, rising. Question, I think you heard it, if this article is funded, is the plan to bring in somebody, a consultant with respect to historic resources and have that as part of the plan?
The simple answer is yes. We would be putting out an RFP to hire more than likely a firm that has a well-rounded group of individuals who can help us prepare this plan. Not only will there be a historic component to it, but I'm going to read through, there's going to be a growth and development, goals and policies, a land use plan, a housing plan, which we actually already have, an economic development plan, which we do not currently have, natural and cultural resources plan, an open space and recreation plan, and this kind of goes to conversation that happened yesterday regarding the capital plan. There will be a capital plan as part of this local comprehensive plan. That's one of the new components under the regional policy plan, and it's going to be one of the requirements for the local comprehensive plan. So there will be services and facilities, transportation, and an implementation program for all of the components of this plan. So yes, there will be historic specialists involved here and a myriad of other specialists that are key to developing this plan. And it's also important to point out, yes, the Planning Board will be integral to this, but this is a local comprehensive plan, which means that there will need to be participation from a number of different boards and committees in this town. It will not be solely under the Planning Board. It will be a group made up of a number of individuals from different boards and committees throughout the town.
Thank you. Further debate, Mrs. Corbett.
I would like to know how the number, expense number, is arrived at. Are these experts hired on a bid basis, or is it their competency? It just seems as though this is a huge sum. So that's my question.
Again, a simple answer is yes.
Ms. Greenhouse.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator. What we are also hoping to do is actually get grant money. Unfortunately, to prepare these kinds of plans and the grant money's available out there, they're reimbursable funds. So there is a very good possibility that a huge chunk of this money will actually be returned to the town, provided we can get the grants, and I'm going to be hunting for every grant, turning over every rock possible. So, you know, to get the best person, it will be out for RFP. We are going to require people to have specific skills and knowledge and demonstration that they've written these plans and written them successfully.
So your reference to an RFP, because I think that's where Mrs. Corbett's question comes as to how the services will be procured. The state procurement process will be followed.
Absolutely.
There will be a request for proposals in accordance with the statute. There'll be judged, there'll be a committee. So that formal process will be followed. Your credentials are one part of that, and the price is another, and so they get negotiated. Any further debate on Article 27? Before I take the vote on this, I need to announce one more time, because it is my obligation as moderator, to make sure that the floor of the meeting only has voters. So unless you hold one of these purple cards that shows that you are a registered voter, you have to be sitting in those two bleacher sections right there to my right. You can't be sitting anywhere else on the floor. So I'd ask anyone who doesn't have one of these purple cards, you've got to move to that section. Otherwise, we can't count correctly when we take votes. So anyone who doesn't have one of these has got to move to that section. Thank you. The motion under Article 27 is accept and adopt. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. Article 28. See if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the remaining balance of funds contained in the following articles funded by free cash and appropriation. Article 39 of 2011 Annual Town Meeting, $1,037.09. Article 23 of the 2014 Annual Town Meeting, $13,459.46. Article 10 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, $6,826. Set transfer funds to be used for the purchase and replacement of technology equipment and software for Brooks Free Library. Do I have a positive motion? Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
I need that.
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded that Article be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is said, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 29. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow a sufficient sum of money from the Golf Improvement Fund to continue landscape reclamation and tree removal according to the FY '20 capital plan, but not restricted to any other areas that the golf director and the committee deem necessary and to act fully thereon. Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted to supplement ongoing landscape reclamation at Cranberry Valley Golf Course and that the town transfer $35,000 from the Golf Capital Improvement Receipts Reserved Fund for this purpose.
Motion under Article 29 is accept and adopt. The sum is $35,000. It's proposed to be transferred from the Golf Capital Improvement Receipts Reserved Fund. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 30. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer and/or borrow a sufficient sum of money from the Golf Improvement Fund to rebuild and renovate hazard features according to FY '20 capital plan at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, commonly referred to as bunkers, but not be restricted to any other areas that the golf director or committee deem necessary and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted to complete some bunker renovations at Cranberry Valley Golf Course and that the town transfer $75,000 to the Golf Capital Improvements Receipts Reserve Fund for this purpose.
Motion under Article 30 is accept and adopt. The sum is $75,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from Golf Capital Improvement Receipts Reserve Fund for this purpose. Any debate on Article 30? Yes, sir.
Richard Kufanya from East Harwich. Can someone from the finance department define the income revenue from the golf course and the expenses for the year of 2018, and explain to the group here, the Golf Improvement Fund?
I think we'll get somebody up in just a second here. Ms. Coppola, our finance director?
So there's a capital portion of memberships that go into that fund to fund the ongoing upkeep of the golf course. So every membership that is purchased by members, there's an associated fee.
What's the revenue for the golf course in 2018? What was the --
Pardon me?
What was the revenue for the golf course for all the fees?
This past year?
Yeah. And what's the expenses for the golf course?
Oh, I can, we can give that to you, sure.
I'm giving you a little latitude here. This article is really about bunkers, but I'm --
Okay, thank you.
So in your warrant book, in Appendix B, line 130 --
That's in the back of the book.
Yes. Line 133, 134, and 135 show golf course actual expenditures for 2017, 2018, then 2019 budget and the 2020 budget. So for 2018, the actual expenditures were $1,486,286.
And the expenses off that, so the Golf Improvement Fund comes from the difference? Now, whereas the town is not paying anything, it's going to be the golf facility is part of this fund? That's where the money's coming from?
Are you referring to the improvements that are being made?
Right.
So the improvements that are being made will be funded by fees, additional fees that go into a receipts reserve for appropriation. The town is not paying for --
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further debate under Article 30? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. A couple of quick questions about the bunker renovation. The $75,000, is that, was there an RFP put out for that to determine that particular number? And if not, is this project that's going to be done in-house? And is there a design component to the bunker renovation part?
Somebody from the golf department, are they here? Mr. Clark, maybe you can respond to those questions?
We are supposed to have someone from the golf department here, so I'm going to try this. Anything of any substance? We do go out for an invitation for bid to have people bid the work. So we do bid the work. We do also, in occasions where it's smaller projects, we do have staff on hand that can actually do the renovations themselves. So then it would just be paid for the time and for the materials.
So the $75,000, and I'm not opposed to the number, I'm just kind of how we back into it. So the $75,000 is based on a bid?
Yeah, actually, they do a, I think it's the USGA, the United Golf Association, they do a overview of the course, and they identify different improvements that need to be made. So there's a master plan, if you would, and then each year, they implement parts of that master plan. So they would bid out those sections that they want to do.
I'm not familiar with the USGA doing master plans, so I spent 30 years in this business, so maybe you can enlighten me.
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to be able to enlighten you any more than I have. There's a plan that was done by an outside agency that we pay to come in, do a master plan, similar to the comprehensive plan.
So there was a master plan?
There was, yes.
Okay. And do you know who that --
I'm probably getting the name wrong, so my apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Further debate on the motion under Article 30? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion is accept and adopt. The sum is $75,000, and it's proposed to be taken from the Golf Capital Improvements Receipt Reserve Fund. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 31, I indicated I would not read this in its entirety. This is amendments to the cemetery rules and regulations. The way this works, according to the warrant that's before you, is that the changes are underlined in bold, and then wherever there's a deletion, it's struck out. So it looks to me like the first changes are on the second page, they're under Items 10, Roman numeral three, cemetery lots, Items 10, 11, and 12. You can see the bold there. And then on Roman numeral six, there's a strikeout under the Howard Senna Cemetery at 268 Main Street. And I think that's the extent of the changes. Let me just make sure. I'm sorry, under number seven, the cemetery office. It's a change from 273 Queen Anne Road to 100 Oak Street. So those are the changes to the regulations that are before you. Do I have a motion?
We do.
I move this article be accepted and adopted with an amendment that would strike the last sentence in Section 3, Cemetery Lots Number 10, as well as Number 11 and 12 in their entirety, and renumber the remaining sections. A notation from the FinCom, "The Harwich Cemeteries have always been accepting and accommodating to visitors, families, friends, and mourners. With few restrictions or demands, the Finance Committee would like to continue this town tradition, and we encourage the Cemetery Commission to provide better awareness through appropriate signage and pamphlets instead of demands and instructions."
All right, so that last part was really debate. I should have held that off. But in any event, there is a motion, there is a second. The motion is different than what's in your warrant, so let me just walk you through it. It's accept and adopt, Article 31, but then it seeks to delete the changes to 10, 11, and 12 under Roman numeral three. So the three changes that the Cemetery Commission's proposed to make to those, this motion deletes those and renumbers the rest of the paragraphs under seven. It keeps the other two changes, which is in Roman numeral six, striking the Howard Senna Cemetery, which we no longer have jurisdiction of, and the change of office in seven to Oak Street. So debate on the motion. Mr. Kogounis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What you just explained and read for the motion was different than what was said by the gentleman. He said he wanted to strike Number 10 in its entirety, and I just want to make sure --
No, he said the last sentence in Section 3.
Okay, just, so all we're striking is the additions.
Is the bold.
The bold.
Is the bold.
As you had described.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question. Any further debate or clarifications? Looks like you're ready for a vote. So the motion before us is that amended motion. All those in favor of that motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 32, Cemetery Arboretum Project. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the arboretum project at the cemetery for the mapping and purchase of software, to be funded by the Cemetery Lot Sales Revolving Fund and to act fully thereon. Positive motion? Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted to purchase cemetery arboretum mapping software and that the town transfer $30,110 from the cemetery revolving account for this purpose.
So the motion under Article 32 is accept and adopt. The amount is still the same, $30,110. It's proposed to be taken from the cemetery revolving account. Any debate? Yes, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm wondering if there was any consideration given when this article was being developed as to whether or not our local schools, our vocational school and the high school departments that could be focused on IT, would develop this for us as not only a cost savings, but an opportunity to create more expanded experience for students.
I don't know if there's somebody here, Robin Kelly, Sanitary Administrator. Any, Mr. Sutford's asking whether there was any outreach to the schools on this.
There actually is a lot of outreach to the schools with this project. A lot of the children, a lot of the students in the high school helped me photograph some of the trees. The Cape Cod Regional Technical High School indexed the trees and wrote a list for me for the scientific name, common name, and we are working with other departments at the school district to create curriculum in the arboretum. But I want to tell you a little bit about the software. So the software that we will be purchasing is, will import all of our over 30,000 burial records from all the cemeteries into a database that will be searchable for people, and it will also import all of the open spaces that are in the cemeteries currently. So if somebody was in hospice and needed to purchase a burial lot, they could virtually view it through this online mobile app, and they'd be able to go into the lot and they could pick out something online and actually see what it looks like without leaving the bedside of their loved one. It also will allow the, if somebody has a burial lot within the town and say they have a six-grave lot and only two are actually used right now, the funeral homes could go in there and work with the people at the funeral home to pick out what spot their loved one is going to go in. It would be an actual time saver for the DPW crew that actually marks out these grave spaces, as well as for myself, or people who are visiting the town, who want to visit their loved ones or their, you know, great-grandparents. We get a lot of inquiries on the weekends on where somebody's buried or how to locate different relatives. This software, you'll be able to search by first name, by last name. You can search phonetically. It's a lot different than the online. I know people talk about the Find a Grave program. On that, you have to search on exact first name and last name, and it only gives you if you have the exact person. So here, you could search for family names and all sorts of other information. It also is going to, we're going to have a company, it's called Cemetery 360. They're like a Google mapping company. They come down, they do every 50 feet, they do a view of the cemetery space, they'll look around. So when you're in it, in the software, you can have a rotation thing. And if you are in the cemetery and somebody says, "All right, I know they are buried in Island Pond Cemetery," and you put in their name, but then they can't find it because there's thousands of people buried there. Instead of going through the 20 acres of burial space, you'll be able to physically hit the little Google walking -- hit the little Google walking guy and he'll walk you from where you are to the grave space.
Any further debate, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Sutford?
Thank you for that explanation. Was there any, any discussion as to whether or not this, much of this could have been accomplished with pamphlets? I'm, I'm curious about that, plus I'm also curious as to just how many people have asked for this resource over the last year?
Yes, I'm sorry.
My name's Frank Gisso, I live in Harwichport. The article says it's an arboretum project. Not much of what Ms. Kelly said related to trees. A lot of it related to gravesite location, which maybe is a, a function, a service that's useful. I'd be curious as to what similar software would cost if it just related to gravesites and didn't have this tree component built into it.
Question as to whether there are other software that is just for gravesites as opposed to the tree project. I do see that the, the article does include mapping as well.
Correct. So not only is it gonna map all of the gravestones, all the people that are there, but also all of the gardens and all of the trees. There are 33 species of trees currently in Island Pond, and, well, actually, we just added another five, so there's 38 species of trees in there. Each tree that's in the cemetery is gonna be identified with their common name, scientific name, leaf characteristic, so that people could do tours. So with the software, you would log in and you could say, you wanna do a tree tour? It will pull up all the trees, it'll have a map, you can either print a map from your computer at home, or you could do the virtual map on the tablet as you're walking. I'm sorry, Mr. Sutford, what was your question?
Thank you. His question was whether or not you considered pamphlets.
We, in this package, they are gonna also create pamphlets for us.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Just one last, last question. Can you tell me, within proximity, how many people in the past year have requested this service from out of town?
So usually about five or six people in the summertime a week call me and ask me. They're trying to visit, they're usually here in the summertime, or other people who are actually just doing pre-planning and trying to figure out if there is any space left in their cemetery lots. This, we, we are doing this part of the arboretum software project because we are writing a grant. And in order, we are writing a grant which is based on part of this information that we started, and the grant will push us over the $50,000 threshold. So we had to put this project on the capital plan so that people know where we're going down the line with this project.
Any further debate?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I guess I'd like to make a motion that, that this article be postponed for one year for further study as to the benefit of a $7,000 a year cost to accommodate what apparently, apparently this past year has been an inquiry by 50 people. It seems like it'd be a nice-
Before you, before you go off and debate a motion, I haven't accepted the motion. A motion to indefinitely postpone is not in order when a motion, a positive motion to, on the article is pending. So your option is to vote no on the main motion to defeat it. So if there's some other motion you'd like to make, but indefinite postponement is not one that I can entertain at this point.
Thank you, I'll vote.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Peggy Gabor. When this program, the arboretum, was rolled out by Ms. Kelly, she indicated to a local newspaper that she had applied in February 2018 for four to five grants that were gonna completely fund this. Where exactly does that stand right now? Because now you're talking about writing a new grant, and you haven't gotten any money.
That is correct. I am working with five different people currently on a grant, working with the Conservation Trust, the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, and we went to the grant writers in Barnstable, and we sat down, and they went through all of the different grant projects that they wanted me to look at and apply for, and they steered me into a different direction. So we are currently writing a grant right now, and it is due at the end of the summer, and we'll be submitting it at that point.
Okay, but right now you have no grant money?
I don't wanna just get a conversation back and forth if you wanna throw me-
Alright, I have another question. She mentioned the Cemetery 360, that is a very high-end software. Their client list is Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills, Pine Lawn in Farmingdale, New York, which is a big Long Island cemetery, Mount Auburn, and the Diocese of Vancouver in Colum- in Canada. They are all privately owned cemeteries, none of them are municipal. Why would you think that this would be a good fit in the expense when you could use Google mapping and other less expensive software programs that put all the names of the people? There's one online for cemetery.com that's $799.
They don't have the same-
You're recognized, Ms. Kelly, if you wanna answer that question.
Robin Kelly Cemetery Administrator. It's totally, the Cemetery 360 is rolling it out for municipalities right now. They approached me at a trade show that I went to, and they have, they are doing it for seven other municipal cemeteries currently. So they used to do specifically, they ju- they developed this product, and the larger cemeteries did pay for the development of this project and of their software, and we are able to reap the benefits of it, so. $7,000 a year for hosting all the data, I, from our revolving account, I feel like that is an acceptable expense. If we had to hire another employee to handle all of these phone calls, it would be way more than that.
Lady in the middle.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Schlansky from East Harwich. I just have two comments to make. As a retired library director of a library that has the genealogical collection for Putnam County, New York. The, I cannot tell you how many people came in per week with notebooks and briefcases clutched under their arms, and this was a small public library, looking for information about where their ancestors were buried. And we did not have the resources to provide it. There were some, but they were very sketchy. And had we had the resources, we could, and these are people from all over the country. They weren't just local people, they were from all over the country coming to look for this information. So in my estimation, this, this software would be a very valuable resource, not only for the town people, but for people coming to look for their, for their ancestors and do genealogy. My other comment has to do, in general, with the arboretum as an educational facility. Mount Auburn Cemetery was mentioned. As a birder, I know that this is one of the primary, Mount Auburn Cemetery is one of the primary birding destinations in New England. Arboretums in general present a fantastic opportunity for science and econo- ecological development in the schools, for a community, as a tourist attraction, and just to improve the environment of any community. So I think that these things need to be taken into consideration. It's more than just a matter of dollars and cents, we fund all sorts of things. This is a definite asset to the town, and however it comes about, it should be considered. Thank you.
Next person waiting, is this gentleman in the middle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Alan Melanson, West Harwich. This is a license agreement for software costing $30,000 to begin with, with estimated renewals right now at $7,000 a year in perpetuity, until Cemetery 360 says possibly like Comcast, well, it was $7,000 two years ago, now it's $15,000. So that's my comment there, but I'm questioning Appendix C, the capital plan, because you have an FY '20, $30,110, but then you have FY '21, $100,000 for mapping and software? Could you guys clarify that for me?
Ms. Kelly, the question from the gentleman is FY '20, was it '20, '21, sir?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we're paying for the mapping and the software this year with the $30,000. The $100,000 is the money for the grant. So we are applying for a grant, and we, when we initially went to apply for the grant, we were applying for a $100,000 grant. The grant that we are applying for now is closer to a half a million dollars. So we are, the grant that we are writing, we, we won't know the total of the amount that we'll be getting, but we are applying for that in August, and we'll have, if we do receive it, that's the money. We're not asking for money, we're not asking you to give us $100,000 next year, I'm writing a grant for that.
So the $100,000 place marker is the, a potential grant that may come in-
That is correct.
That was placed in the plan.
So through you, it could be $100,000 or it could be $500,000 next year, depending on how well we can write said grants?
Correct.
Well, depending on what they get for a grant.
And if they don't get a grant, where does the money come to keep funding it?
I think that money is the $7,000 per year is, is estimated. I assume that comes out of their revolving fund, but-
Through you to the Cemetery Commission, if it's $7,000 a year and now you got a $100,000 grant, what are you gonna do with the $100,000 grant to get it for mapping and software?
Ms. Kelly, what is the grant for?
The hundred-
We're getting a little far from this article, but I'll, I appreciate you trying to put it all together.
The $100,000 grant that we initially was writing for, were for improvements to the cemetery. Some of the cemetery needs roadway repair and drainage issues. Plus, we're planting more gardens, we wanna get a bee hive on the property for the pollinator gardens, and different improvements to the cemetery. Those will not happen without the grant, so we are writing the grant to get extra things in the cemetery.
Anything further, sir?
So the only motion would be to deny the warrant at this time?
If you're not in favor of this motion, you vote no when I call for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
And then I have Mr. Weiser.
Kathleen Muller, Hunt Lane. One of the speakers inquired as to how often or who makes inquiries like this. Recently, on a trip to Alaska, I met an elderly couple who were delighted to meet people from Harwich, and their parents are buried in Island Pond Cemetery. I assured them that I would go to that grave, visit the grave, be sure it was clean, and get back to them. I was unable to find the grave even though I knew the lane in which it was, an Island Pond Cemetery. I would've welcomed this software at that time. Secondly, as the retired librarian from Putnam County spoke so eloquently, and trees are a huge physical resource, they are an asset to our town. My own college is, treats its campus as an arboretum. We certainly should be preserving this land, recognizing the value of these trees, logging them, and maintaining them. That said, I can't speak to this specific software or this specific cost. I assume that other software has been considered, and that the pros and cons have been considered before this particular one has been recommended to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Weiser?
Bob Weiser, Birch Drive. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I have, you know, what is it? Typically, simple question, one member of the Finance Committee voted against this item, and I am curious as to what the thinking of the Finance Committee member who voted against this item was. And if he or she is present, I'd love to hear what they were thinking. Perhaps we should also hear what the others were thinking.
Looks like we have Mr. Chori up again?
Hi, my-
Mr. Chori?
Hi, my name is John Chori, Finance Committee. Yes, I did vote no on this article for a couple of reasons. One, the article that is spelled out right now, how to use the money in the Cemetery Revolving Fund, it's for maintenance of town cemeteries. That's the only thing that can be spent, from the revolving house can be spent on. This is not a maintenance of a cemetery, in my opinion, that's the first one. Second one, we've been hearing last night, especially last night, we have needs and we have wants in this town. This is a need or it's a want, that is totally dependent on each individual in this room. If you think you need this, then vote yes. If you think you want, want it, I mean, if you think you need it, vote no. If you think you want it, vote yes. It's totally up to you, folks. We can give our recommendations, my recommendation is no on this article. And, so that's where I stand on this article, thank you.
Further debate, yes, ma'am?
Janet Cassidy, East Harwich. I'm also the Director of the Brooks Academy Museum, run by the Historical Society. And I just want to say that very frequently during the summer when tourists are here, or even in the off-season when they're not here, I get frequent phone calls from people who want to know if the Historical Society has records of who is buried in which cemetery, and can we help them find their ancestors. And we don't have those kind of records, so I refer them to Robin Kelly. And I can just say it's at least once a week during tourist season. So there is a lot of demand for information about the cemeteries. I think the program would be very useful. I also am in favor of the arboretum, because I think having that wonderful resource of trees and gardens is an asset to the town and would give tourists something else to do while they're here. It's a beautiful area and we should take, make use of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiser, you had a follow-up, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you after Mr. Chori spoke.
That's okay. Just the observation that if these costs are being borne by the revolving fund, in other words, the people who are utilizing the cemetery, or the families of the people who are utilizing the cemetery in this case, those fees are being used to do things to improve the cemetery. So this is not really a question of want or need, in my understanding, because the cemetery is using funds that are coming into the cemetery to pay for things to improve the cemetery. That seems like an imminently reasonable idea. That's why we have established these revolving funds, as I understand it. So, what is the objection? Where do we get into this thing? It's not affordable. If the cemetery is self-supporting, and there are revenues available from selling plots in the cemetery, why is it, why is there an issue with the cemetery professionals that we employ for this purpose? To suggest that we use revenues to make improvements that will be useful both to the residents of the community and to our visitors, who are an important part of the economic base of what allows us all to live here? Thank you.
Further debate, this gentleman's been standing for a bit.
Stamp Hestusak, I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Okay, so motions are made to move the question, do I hear a second? And it's been seconded. It's a non-debatable motion, it requires a three-fourths majority to pass, and it would terminate debate on this article. All those in favor of terminating debate on the motion under Article 32, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. I'm gonna take it one more time, I have to get a unanimous vote, or I'll have to take a standing count with a three-fourths, I can't call it. So all those in favor of terminating debates, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no, it's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we're gonna go right to the motion on Article 32. The motion is that it be accepted and adopted, and that the mapping software that the town transfer $30,110 from the cemetery revolving account for this purpose. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Are the tellers in the hall? From last evening, if the same tellers are here, it would be great. If not, I see three, I need one more, I know somebody came up and volunteered, this gentleman here. And again, your name, sir?
Thanks. They've already been sworn. I solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge you from the duties incumbent on me as a teller. Front table here, and the back bleacher section on the right. Right. Nobody standing, Tom's gonna handle, people standing.
Okay, we're on Article 32. We're going to take a standing count. You're going to need your purple voter card. All those in favor of the motion, in favor of the motion on Article 32, please rise and hold up your voter card, please. Mr. Robinson, seventy-four? Mr. Banks?
Twenty-five.
All right.
Twenty-five.
And Mr. Evans?
Eighty-three.
All those opposed to the motion, those in opposition, rise and hold your voter card, please. Twenty-nine. Mr. Banks?
Eleven.
Mr. Evans?
Eighty-two.
Those in favor, two-hundred-and-twelve. Those in opposition, two-hundred-and-eleven. It passes.
Wow!
Article 33.
Recount.
I don't do a recount where we have a standing count. Article 33, see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into long-term leases, licenses, agreements, or other contractual agreements on behalf of the town, subject to such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem to be in the best interest of the town for all or a part of the following town-owned properties: As of right sight on Queen Anne Road, Cranbury Valley Golf Course, DPW Maintenance Building, Community Center on Oak Street, and Public Safety Building Ground Mount on Sisson Road. This is for the purpose of developing, sponsoring, administering, installing, operating, and maintaining photovoltaic energy systems and supplying solar energy. Further, authorize the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator to take such actions as may be necessary under mass law to effectuate said agreements. Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
So moving seconded that this article be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 33, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 34, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute an amendment to the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district as available at the clerk's office of each respective town and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
Michael, I have a question. The question is, it's authorize? Yeah, authorize the Board of Selectmen to amend.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted to authorize Board of Selectmen to amend the agreement between town and Montemoy Regional School District by moving the transition sections of the original agreement, by removing the transition sections of the original agreement.
The motion under Article 34 is accept and adopt and authorize the Board of Selectmen to amend the agreement between the towns. This deals with removing transition sections from the original agreement that apparently are no longer needed. Any debate? Mr. Kakounis?
In the explanation in our warrant, it also describes that there were some changes to the capital expenditure and borrowing costs, which have been updated to reflect the sharing of the operating budget. Is that also going to be included in the new updated plan, or are we just taking out any reference to the transitional period?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Not both.
Both? Well, if you could use the microphone, please. This is the superintendent. And then I'll get you and Ms. Sebula. Mr. Carpenter, Superintendent.
Sorry, it is both.
So when you say it's both, the capital expenditure and borrowing costs are updated as part of this agreement? That was his question, I think.
That's correct.
There were just, it was minor wording changes with regard to how the debt was assessed when it came to borrowing costs.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Kakounis?
It does, but I'm concerned of two things. And one, I will rely on your expertise. Is the motion adequate enough to cover the other changes, even if they are incidental, other changes that are not directly related to the transitional language, number one. And number two, I guess my concern to the Board of Selectmen is I want to make sure they do have the authority that if there are more changes that they can go ahead and execute the agreement.
Yeah. So we start with the article, and the article, Ms. Kakounis, talks about a, an agreement that's on file with the town clerk. And so if all of these things are on file with that agreement that's in the office of the town clerk, then the motion is clearly broad enough to cover it. Ms. Sebula?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Linda Sebula, 460 Route 28 in Harwich Port. While I see some language in here as explanation of some things that might be changing, I'd like to hear a detail what it was and what the proposed changes are so that we can understand what we're voting on, because this doesn't tell me much. So what exactly is the change to, for example, how cost-sharing is changing? What does it mean? From what to what? So that's my question.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter, are you able to comment on that specifically with respect to the cost-sharing as it pertains to debt service?
I could if you give me a few minutes to get both my glasses and to pull up a copy of what...
That would be great.
Presented.
That would be great. We'll give you a minute.
I'm going to need a few more minutes. I pulled up the wrong document on this.
Okay. I think it's important enough that we'll wait another minute or two to see Ms. Kakounis, I recognize you have another question on this article.
I do, Mr. Moderator, and I was wondering if it's okay, while we're waiting for Mr. Carpenter, if we continued some debate and maybe I could ask my second question?
Absolutely, if there is more debate, yes.
Thank you very much. I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but I think maybe I'd be looking to the Board of Selectmen to answer this. With the ongoing situation in our neighboring towns with these regional school districts, I'm a little concerned that we have in front of us a kind of a carte blanche, giving the Board of Selectmen the authority to sign these documents with these changes, and none of us have seen the changes. I confess, I did not go to the clerk's office. I have not read the document. I should have done my due diligence, but I didn't. But I would think that in the future, and I'm wondering if we're going to have any opportunity, if we're interested, when these changes are discussed at the Board of Selectmen's level, to have input. I mean, are there going to be public hearings? Is there going to be a public forum? Because there are some people, obviously, I know Ms. Sebula's very interested, may want to comment on it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Howell wants to respond to that. Selectman Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For whatever it's worth, I mean, I personally and the Board has been committed to making sure that the agreement was lived up to because the town meetings were always part of changing the agreements periodically. The actual wording came back to us at least twice this year, I believe three times, but I can remember twice at least, with the real line-outs and the language changes. That wound up occurring slightly after the warrant was printed, but I'm personally disappointed that there isn't anything here because I don't particularly want, and I don't think any of the members of the Board want, carte blanche authority to change the agreement. The agreement clearly said it was going to come back to each of the town meetings if it ever needed to be changed, whether that would be ratified, the Board of Selectmen would be involved in that process. We were involved, but you're not seeing the language that we saw.
I guess he's not ready yet. Yes, ma'am. Something further?
Janelle Brown, Harwich Center. If we were to vote this down tonight, what would
Town Council, Amy Kessel? Question, what happens if this article does not pass?
The changes wouldn't go forward in the agreement. That simple, okay. I do have concern about...
She said that if the article fails, the changes would not go forward in the agreement. The Board wouldn't have the authority to execute it.
I have concern about the agreement that I also have not read. I did not realize that something would be available at the town clerk's office for me to read his homework prior to town meeting. I wish I had known, I would have done that. I have concern about the Chatham population, as we've been told, decreasing, and the student enrollment decreasing, and therefore increasing the financial liability of Harwich. And I think that is a very big discussion that all of us need to be part of, and I would hate to have five members of our community have that responsibility on their shoulder. I am going to vote no for this.
Mr. Carpenter, are you available to make a comment at this point?
Mr. Moderator. Yes, Robert Bremen, Schooner Drive. I'd like to suggest that this article be tabled to the next special town meeting.
Yeah. We don't have a motion to table within our options, so we're either going to vote yes or no on the article. If we vote no, we can come back at a future town meeting. There's no prohibition against that.
Well, I hope everybody will do that.
Mr. Carpenter, are you able to speak to us yet?
So there were a variety of different changes that had happened, but as, as one of the selectmen just mentioned, during the different iterations that we brought back to the Board, there was wording in there that, that talked about if, if there was a, it says in this, debt service costs attributed to the district's elementary schools will be assessed to the member towns that own the building. And that was the sort of fundamental focus that we had when it comes to debt service, so that, you know, so that if there's debt that, that would happen at Harwich Elementary School, the town of Harwich would be responsible for that. If there's debt that has to happen at Chatham Elementary School, that Chatham Elementary School would be responsible for that. And one of those, one of the things that we have discussed over the last several years is that the schools in Chatham might need to have roofs replaced, you know, so this would, in that case, have the cost of those roofs be attributable to the folks, the taxpayers in Chatham for replacing the roof at the Chatham Elementary School, not to have it split between Harwich and Chatham with Harwich paying essentially 73% of the bill and Chatham paying 27%. So that was initially what the proposal was, and on the last iteration, when we went back to the Board of Selectmen, we had a, there was a, I think, an inadvertent line that was left in the drafts that were going back and forth between us, our lawyers, and the Board. And there was one line that that talked about how if the district had reconfigured its elementary schools to upper and lower, and one of the things we were clear with, and I appreciate the selectmen bringing this up, you know, we have no intention of creating upper and lower schools, so we, you know, so our school committee went to the Board and said, you know, we're just going to take that out because we don't want that confusing anything at town meeting. You know, we just want it to be a simple little statement. So it reads, as I said, debt service costs attributed to the district's elementary schools will be assessed to the member towns that own the building.
Do you know, Mr. Carpenter, whether or not the final copy, you've discussed various iterations here, whether the final copy was filed at the town clerk's office?
It was. It was sent to the, you know, to the town manager and the select board. I presume it was filed.
Is there any other debate on this article? Mr. Kakounis?
I'm sorry, but it's the next obvious question. Ms. Doucette, was the finished, sorry, amendment?
Ms. Kukunis, I asked that question from, of Mr. Carpenter, because I did ask Ms. Doucette before that, and she's unaware that she has seen the final version, so...
Thank you. I would ask that the floor join me and vote this down. Let it come back next year when we have all the information.
Any further debate? Yes, sir.
A follow-up on the question about what happens if we vote no. Town council said the selectmen won't be able to sign the agreement. What is the practical impact of their not being able to sign the agreement? Is there some money that's supposed to be transferred between towns that can't be transferred? It's just not clear to say, not being able to sign the agreement. I think if people thought there were some dire consequence to that, they might consider how they vote and be less inclined to vote no, but to simply say, can't sign the agreement, doesn't really give much of an answer as to what the real impact is of a no vote here.
So, good question. The gentleman asks, are there any financial implications to delaying action on this article that anyone's aware of that we can report to the meeting? Mr. Brown?
I move this article be indefinitely postponed.
I can't take indefinite postponement.
I apologize.
We have a positive motion on the floor, so...
There's no financial implications on this one?
No financial, no. Mr. DeCosta reports no financial implications. To the Finance Committee's knowledge, sir. Any further debate?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. DeCosta.
The Harwich Finance Committee met with the Chatham Finance Committee just to discuss this article and the overall school budget in April. We would just wanted to make sure, because of our neighbors to the west, that we were having a dialogue and talking to each other to make sure that...
Last time I checked, Chatham is to the east.
No, but with the problems that our schools to the west are having, we decided to visit the eastern portion of our...
I thought that was a trek.
No, no, no. I'm not the harbor master. I don't know my, from east to my west. But we were both, both boards were surprised by the school's ability to buy land in this language, and that bothered both of us, but we decided not to make an amendment on this, and I think our board is disappointed now that the language is not included in the warrant for the entire body to see, so we just had a straw poll and we unanimously agreed that this thing should be voted down this year.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Judith Underwood, Harwich Center. Just a quick question, a clarification. If it was not available with the town clerk, can we even vote on this?
You can vote on it, but I'm not sure what kind of effect it has, because if it's not with the town clerk, there's nothing to really reference here.
No, I guess my...
So, I think...
As a body, can we vote on this if it's not?
They can vote on it, but it wouldn't have much effect, so... In other words, it sounds as if you had done your homework, as Ms. Brown wished she had, and gone to the clerk's office. I'm not sure she would have found anything based on what the town clerk has reported to you. So, the motion is still to accept and adopt and amend the agreement. Any further debate? Hearing none, I'm gonna put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Motion does not carry. Article thirty-five, it's a charter amendment to create a water commission, I mean, excuse me, a wastewater commission under the Harwich Home Rule Charter. I'm not gonna read it in its entirety. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. As I say, it expands the, the powers of the water commission to include wastewater. Do I have a positive motion? Mr. Chori?
Yes, yes. I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
So, the motion on Article thirty-five is accept and adopt as printed. Any debate? Mr. Thompson?
Good evening, everybody. I just, let me share with you quickly, Harwich Water Department received awards again from the state level for, I believe, it's the total of twelfth year in a row and fifth under our new superintendent.
Alan, you gotta speak right into that mic if you would.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We're supporting this article this year. The language is fine. My only request is that, I know the selectmen said they wanted to build it and turn it over to us, but my hopes are they will, we take comments from the water superintendent. He's very versed in this, and, and so when the transition does come, we don't have a lot of headaches with it. Thank you.
Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an extremely important article because it actually seals the deal that we had promised a number of years ago. You don't want the selectmen involved in the operations of the sewer. You don't. This is being transferred over to an organization that already is familiar with pipes, water, and they've got a superintendent who has a skill set in this. And right now, that person works for both the town when we're talking about wastewater and the water department when we're talking about water. This is a huge step forward to us. It clarifies, as the thing is built, it's gonna be turned over, each segment, over to the water wastewater department.
Further debate? Yes, sir.
My name's Sandy McClarty, East Harwich. Dealing with wastewater is different than water, even though they're both employed pipes. Do they have the adequate licenses and certification to manage this new responsibility?
Mr. Thompson, can you answer that?
Our superintendent has taken all the courses, but until we, until we actually have a wastewater going on, he can't have a license according to the state, even though he's taken all the courses, and he's worked in it years before he came to Harwich as a superintendent.
All right. So, apparently, our superintendent has past experience, has taken all the licenses, and once we're online, we'll become licensed. Yes, sir.
Al Rosenberg, East Harwich. I would like to know, the elected commissioners get a salary, is that correct? And do they get health benefits? To what amount? What is the dollar figure?
I don't think there's any health benefits, and I think it's just a thousand dollars, right?
That's correct.
Right.
No health benefits.
They get a thousand-dollar stipend. The water commissioners will now be water and wastewater commissioners. There are no health benefits.
Add two more members to the commission. After, if this, if this is passed, then we'll add two more people to the board, so it's a five-member board. Status quo. We get a thousand dollars a year. We just got a raise last year. I didn't have to ask.
Good job.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This is a proposed amendment to the Home Rule Charter, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article thirty-six, another charter amendment that I said I wouldn't read in its entirety. Another very important charter amendment dealing with the capital outlay committee. The changes to this section nine, subsections five and six are either strikeouts or in bold. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look at it. Mr. Chori?
Yes, I move this article, I move this article be accepted, I move this article be accepted and adopted as amended it to exclude in chapter nine, section six, parentheses seven, with the exception of petition articles and the CPC articles from capital plan printed in the warranty.
So, we have a motion on the floor which is accept and adopt as amended to exclude in chapter nine, section six, with the exception of petition articles and CPC articles from the capital plan printed in the warrant. So, that's a nine-six-seven, where it says, with the exception of petition articles, this motion adds, uh, and CPC articles. So, there are two exceptions to that provision in nine-six-seven of being in compliance with the plan in order to be considered at a town meeting. Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is another one of those extremely important things, not just housekeeping. As Mr. Kukunis correctly pointed out last night, we've gotten ourselves in a position at town meeting where there is no capital plan. It's a capital budget right now. Each year you come in, you're seeing a different capital budget. We used to have a capital plan, and the, and the plan itself wasn't a plan for us exclusively. It was a plan for you so that you could plan on what your taxes were gonna look like with the borrowing burden that was going to be added. Things would be taken off, things would be put on, and an orderly process would be restored again with this. If somebody was on year five and a real bad emergency occurred, we could, by two-thirds voted at the town meeting, make that jump to a first priority in the first year. But, other than that, you control your own destiny. The plan is the plan, and it would be sequenced. Twenty-twenty would be the items that are listed. You'd wait for twenty-twenty-one for when that came up, and that's the way you used to see this. It has devolved into a capital budget, which is confusing for us, never mind for you, so this, this allows for an orderly process that you will be involved with, and even if you pass this tonight, I guarantee you it's going to the ballot next year for your further approval, because it's very important. It's a charter amendment. I highly recommend that you pass this along to the ballot box because it's to your betterment. You'll have a much more transparent view of what our capital needs are.
Further debate? Mr. Kukunis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I concur with all the statements Mr. Howell has just said. This is very important. It will stop me from standing up at the mic and saying that we have a capital budget and not a capital plan.
You'll find another reason to get up, Leo.
I will. I do have, I do have a problem, and I would like to ask through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Finance Committee, I guess. On the nine-six-seven...
Yes.
Why are we exempting petition articles from the capital plan? If someone got ten people, they could put together an article to build a, building on town property, and it would be something that would impact us, and I think it would be and should be subject to being on the capital plan. Other than that, usually petition articles don't involve large expenditures of money. So, I guess I'm just curious, why are we exempting petition articles?
That's probably better directed to the Bylaw Committee that... Mrs. Hall?
I always hate following Leo. The Bylaw Charter Review Committee passed, recommended this article. Last night, people in this room made it abundantly clear that they want to get a handle on the finances. This is an important tool to enable us to do that, to go back to the way we used to do capital planning, to answer the question about petition articles. Petition articles can't be removed. Nobody has any control over a petition article, other than the petitioners. The selectmen can't take it out of the warrant. They go in regardless. So, this is just clarifying that point. The CPC question came up. Personally, I don't think whether you include it or don't include it makes any difference operationally. It's fine to leave it that way. CPC articles generally, if they're not funding something that's a governmental function, they bring in their articles. If it's a town government and it's on the Charter Review, on the, on the capital outlay plan, excuse me, and they wish to fund some part of it, then they become a funding source. So, basically, operationally, it makes no difference, with it or without it.
Any further debate on this article? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, the, the motion under Article thirty-six, accept and adopt as printed, with the exception that, in addition to, in nine-six-seven, petition articles, CPC articles are also accepted from the provisions of that paragraph. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule it got the necessary two-thirds majority and passed. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote pursuant to chapter forty-three B, section ten, to amend chapter seven, section seven of the town charter with the amendment, will be subject to approval of the voters at the twenty-twenty annual town election. This is on ex officio appointments. As I indicated, I would not read this one in its entirety either. Do I have a positive motion? Is there a positive motion out there somewhere? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hall?
No, there's no positive.
No positive motion? Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be indefinitely postponed.
It's been moved and seconded that Article thirty-seven be indefinitely postponed. Is there any debate? Mrs. Hall?
Not a debate, just a clarification. We discovered a conflict with this provision within the charter itself under the definitions, which clearly state that ex officio members don't vote, which probably means that a lot of the committees we have now are voting in violation of the charter, but we don't want to go there. We need to go back to the drawing board and clean up the definition before we can go forward with this article.
Any further debate? Mr. McManus?
Just a brief common explanation, and this refers more to the previous two articles. The process of amending the charter that we're under requires a two-thirds vote in favor here, plus the amendment has to return and be approved at the ballot the following year. So, the two previous charter amendments, they receive their town meeting approval. They will have to wait to become final until next May when they go to the ballot box.
Any further debate on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article thirty-seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The article's indefinitely postponed. Article thirty-eight, this is the first of the community preservation articles, and I know that the chairman has given me a, a list somewhere here that I've got. Mr. Nixon? Bear with me just a minute. Perhaps you have another copy, Mr. Nixon? I know you did. No. Thank you. All right. Okay, so Articles thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five are what we commonly refer to as the community preservation articles. Mr. Nixon is the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, and he has provided me with a report, which I will give to the town clerk, which shows that on each one of these articles, the Community Preservation Committee recommended the project to town meeting. So, we're gonna start with Article thirty-nine. Article thirty-nine is to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Act funds undesignated fund balance, five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt. Any funds left unspent from this article ought to be returned to the Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated reserve, and to act fully thereon. Do I have a positive motion? I jumped over thirty-eight. I apologize. Thirty-eight. Right. Okay, thirty-eight, this is to put community preservation funds in different buckets. The community housing reserve, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-four-eleven, open space reserve, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-four-eleven, and historic preservation reserve, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-four-eleven. Those are designations under Article thirty-eight. Do I have a motion on this one? Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article, I move that the town transfer from FY twenty estimated revenue community preservation fund, the sum of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-eleven dollars for the historic reserve fund, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-eleven dollars for the open space reserve fund, and one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-eleven dollars for the community housing reserve fund.
Okay, the motion's been made in second under thirty-eight to fund each one of those reserves under community preservation, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-four-eleven in each one. Mr. Nixon, any comments on that one, other than the fact that the committee has recommended to town meeting that they do it? Okay, any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of that motion on Article thirty-eight so signify by saying... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Gotta wave that hand.
I'm wondering about the community housing reserve. When I first moved back to Harwich, I discovered that there were a lot of houses... When I first moved back to Harwich, I discovered that there were a lot of houses, especially in North Harwich, but some other places, that had nobody living in them, and that sometimes we brought it up, and it really upset me because I know we need housing for people who don't have a lot of money. So I used, in my idealistic side, to take my lawnmower over to these houses and mow the grass so they would look more appealing, and somebody might be interested in purchasing them and giving them a family to live in them. One of them that was over on about a couple of miles past the dump that I really was fond of, I came to the town office to find out what was the deal with this one. Why was it just sitting there? And I was told that there were back taxes due. Now that house is condemned. It took about six years for it to fall apart, and now nobody can live in it, and it's going to waste. And I can tell you there are at least three or four other houses in that general area that are the same. I'm wondering if the Community Preservation Group is considering in any way to look at the notion of purchasing some of these abandoned houses and giving them, either giving them to Habitat or providing an opportunity for people who need a family house to fix them up and keep them from just collapsing on themselves, because it really just seems to me disturbing that there are all these houses with nobody in them. I'm not even going to talk about the second homes, but the ones that really were somebody's house. They died, they're in a nursing home, they owe taxes, and nobody pays any attention until they die. So I'm just hoping that people in that group might consider that as one of the ways to increase affordable housing.
Thank you, and we'll bring that to the attention of our Affordable Housing Trust, and you'll hear more about them under Article 42. Any further debate on Article 38? Hearing none, I'm going to put that motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Article 38 passes. Article 39, this is the one that I read before. This is to fund the land bank debt, ongoing, $553,700. Positive motion, Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you. I move to appropriate from Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance, $553,700, to fund the debt service on the outstanding land bank debt in Article 4 of this town meeting. Any funds left unspent from this article are to be returned to the Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance.
Motion under Article 39 is to appropriate from Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance, that $553,700 to fund the debt service on outstanding land bank. Debate on the motion, Mrs. Corbett.
I'm curious as to what the percentage of interest or the percentage is on the debt and whether such debt is ever renegotiated when rates drop.
Our Director of Finance is coming up. So two questions. What's our current interest rate on the land bank debt, and have we ever renegotiated it?
So there are a number of outstanding debt issuances for land bank debt, and they all have varying interest rates over the life of those loans. They have been what we call refunded or refinanced already to a lower interest rate. They'll be fully paid off in 2024.
Do you know the rates approximately that we're paying?
I would have to give you a rough estimate of between 2% and 4%.
Somewhere between 2% and 4% we're paying. Any further debate on the motion under Article 39, the land bank debt? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read under Article 39 so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Article 40, and again, this is another article that the CPC has given me, their report that they recommend this to the town meeting. This involves funding three projects: Community Development Partnership, which is a Cape Housing Initiative, 7,500; lifeguard stands, 11 lifeguard stands at town beaches, $37,950; and Depot Street North Crossing System, installation of pedestrian warning lights on the bike trail, $27,000. The total is 72,450. Do I have a positive motion? Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted and that $72,450 be transferred from Community Preservation Act funds as identified on the chart in the warrant for this purpose.
Okay, the motion on Article 40 is accept and adopt. The sum is what was in the warrant there, $72,450, and it's proposed to be transferred from the Community Preservation Act funds as identified on the chart. Any debate on this project? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 41, this involves the Brooks Academy Museum, and it's looking for money for to fund, first, a structural engineering study pertaining to the foundation of the building; second, to be used to make said foundation structurally sound; and third, once both, excuse me, both of the above are completed, to be used to restore and preserve the outer shell of the building or protect the building from further damage due to water dampness, including any pertinent interior work. The proposed sum under this is $130,000, and the CPC Committee has voted to recommend this to town meeting. Positive motion, Mr. DeCosta.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that $130,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act funds, Historic Reserve, for this purpose.
Okay, the motion's been made in second under 41. It's the same amount, 130, and it's to be transferred from Community Preservation Act funds, Historic Reserve, for this purpose. Any debate on the Brooks Academy project? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 42, this is the Affordable Housing Trust funding. The proposal is $340,000 to be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of creating and preserving affordable housing in the town of Harwich. Do I have a positive motion?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant and that $340,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act funds, Community Housing Reserve of $35,615, no, excuse me, $35,615.53 from FY '20 Estimated Annual Revenue for this purpose.
Okay, the motion under Article 42 is a total of $340,000. There were two parts to it, coming from two different sources within community preservation, some on hand, some to be received. The Community Preservation Committee has also voted to recommend this Article 42 to town meeting. Debate on this article, funding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Yes. Mr. Winston.
Mr. Moderator, yes. Recognize, my name's Greg Winston, and I'm actually chairman, president of Mid-Cape Church Homes. We are the largest provider of affordable housing in the town of Harwich. We have in excess of 165 units of affordable housing right now. My only, my question, and maybe it's more than a question, it's, may we please work together? It seems as though the town of Harwich doesn't have an understanding as to what Mid-Cape Church Homes has been doing for the community for the past 30 years. And with the establishment of the trust, we have, in an article that'll be coming up shortly, you'll see numerous parcels here and there designated for affordable housing that really aren't appropriate for affordable housing. So what I would really like to do is to say, not that I'm against the article, but to say that I would like to amend a future article, which I believe are...
Why don't we stay just on 42 for the moment, Mr. Winston, rather than get ourselves confused?
Then the bottom line, the bottom line is, I think that this article is appropriate, but I think that in actuality, we should be working together, and our organization, Mid-Cape Church Homes, as the largest provider of affordable housing, should be working together with the trust. That's all. Thank you.
Any further debate on Article 42? Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Clark, Town Administrator, I'm also on the trust. So we did form the Affordable Housing Trust. There's five members, so I am on the trust. Brandon Lowny, if you don't mind standing up, Judith Underwood, Don Howell, and Larry Brophy are the other members of the trust. We formed in October, so we are up and running, and we have received some, a large amount of interest. I think the lady that had the individual homes, we're definitely interested in talking to the property owners to see where there's opportunities, and we do have public meetings. I think the next one is next Thursday at 2:00, so if you're interested and have an interest. And also, we do have a coordinator on board, Kalinda Deegan, and Andrea Aldana are two members that they have office hours. So it is a newer group, and I just wanted to kind of introduce ourselves to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any further debate on 42?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
David Purdy from Harwich Port.
Yes, Mr. Purdy.
Half of the question I was going to ask was just answered by the naming of who's on the trust. The question I have is how are the members of the trust chosen, and what is the relationship of the trust to the Affordable Housing Committee that used to be accountable for affordable housing to the selectmen?
Mr. Howell has said he will respond to your question, Mr. Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That was actually one of the things I stood to speak to. There's community members on it, there's selectmen's representative, which is me, there's another town representative, which is the town administrator. The difference between the trust and the committee is something that actually speaks to a lot of the discussion prior to this. The Housing Committee had no funding. The Housing Committee had no ability to build anything. They could come in front of the selectmen, who also were kind of amateurs at affordable housing. The trust allows us to drill down on things and without having to wait to go to town meeting, that's why we're asking for the community preservation money, they can jump on an opportunity, like those derelict houses, because those are privately held. We have to be able to make a move with funding in between town meetings. The trust has become an effective tool in Yarmouth, in Brewster, and a lot of other places. It allows the town to have people who are actually well-informed about affordable housing to make assessments about the various pitches that they're getting for projects and be able to move on them quickly. Ideally, we should build up even more money than this, but this is a good start, and it's a good mechanism, because the Housing Committee, in the old process, would have to be approached by a proponent for a project that might want some town money. The Housing Committee would then have to give an opinion to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would have to agree to it, and in the end, they'd have to come back here, which could be 10 or 11 months later. It's really slowed things down. This is an opportunity for us to focus on the problem, focus on who's doing what, and where our money could be effectively spent to be able to actually build things. I remember my good friend Bob Murray used to talk about funding things, and the one thing he said is, if you're only going to fund a study, it's not going to be meaningful. I want to put a person in a house. That's what this is supposed to do, and it's supposed to do it quickly.
Any further debate on Article 42? Mr. Purdy.
Well, thank you for that explanation of the purpose and value of the trust. I was on the Affordable Housing Committee for 12 years, and I understand exactly the issue that this is attempting to address, because as Mr. Howell described it, it takes forever to get an affordable house built in Harwich, in the Harwiches, and I hope that this will streamline that. However, the question still has not been answered. Who chooses the people to serve in the trust? I know who, I know who they are, and I know what they represent, but who chooses them? Are they elected by the town? Are they selected only by the select board, or who chooses them?
Mr. Clark.
In terms of the structure of the organization, the town administrator is on there as a part of the board, a member of the Board of Selectmen, and then the three at large are selected by the Board of Selectmen members.
Would they apply to the Board of Selectmen as volunteers from the community?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Further debate, gentleman in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Dillon from Harwich. I'd like to ask a couple of questions concerning Articles 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42. It states that the sums will be coming from the fiscal year 2020 estimated annual revenues. What are the estimated annual revenues to support all the monies that are being asked for in the Articles 38, 39, 40, 41, and 42? Well over $1 million and a half dollars.
Just in general, I'm going to turn it over to Carol to provide the direct numbers, but we do have a surcharge that goes on to the tax bill that's 3% that's included in everyone's tax bill, so that is the primary funding mechanism. And then the state does provide some additional money that theoretically matches a portion of that.
And what is the total estimate?
Yep, for the specifics.
Director of Finance? Question is total projected receipts for Community Preservation Act for this year.
So for FY fiscal year 2020, the estimated receipts total for all different sources total $1,684,110, and that's just for FY '20. There's FY '18 funds that were also available to fund these projects, and so those funds are being capitalized as well.
So will the estimate revenues cover all the expenses that you're asking for in these articles?
Absolutely.
Any further debate? Hearing none, I'm going to put the motion to a vote. We're on Article 42, and the motion on Article 42 is accept and adopt. That sum was $340,000 from Community Preservation Funds. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 43, another community preservation project. This is San Pond Restroom Project. Community Preservation Committee also voted to recommend this to town meeting as well. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted and that $125,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance for this purpose.
All right, the motion under Article 43 is accept and adopt. The sum is 125, $125,000, and it's to be transferred from Community Preservation Act funds, undesignated fund balance. Any debate on the San Pond project? Yes, Mrs. Urbano.
Yes. I'd very much like to hear from the Finance Committee, those members that voted no.
Mr. DeCosta.
I voted no. Basically, I go all the way back to before I was a selectman in the 1980s and 90s, where I was on this commission, and we ended up moving out all of the swimming instruction and so forth out of San Pond and moving it to other locations. And I voted against this because I didn't want to see a migration back to that pond for this kind of use. But majority of the board voted to support this, and you should follow the direction of the majority.
Any further questions, Mrs. Urbano?
Yes, is this the second person available for their viewpoint as well, please?
I voted no because I was concerned we were just given the initial action that was going to be taken, and that was to redo and fix the bathrooms. I thought it would be much more appropriate to have had a plan that said we start with bathrooms, and then we fix the sand, and then we do whatever we do. It's probably a five- or six-year plan that we could lay into the capital plan, rather than a beginning that I don't know where it's going to go. That's why I voted no.
That's my concern also, and I wonder if we could hear, is there another phase to this, and what is that next phase?
Is there somebody here to speak to this one, Mr. Nixon?
Yes, there is. The Recreation Director.
Mr. Beebe, Eric Beebe.
How you doing? Eric Beebe, Recreation Director. We do have plans for San Pond. Whether we go forward with, oh, I'm sorry.[1790.01][1790.01](LAUGHTER). Raise it up there. Everybody good? Yeah? All right. We do have plans for San Pond for the future. It's a very... We do have plans for San Pond for the future. It's a very valuable resource to the Rec Department. It's a huge parking lot. It's a revenue producer. We really want to revamp San Pond. But whether we do anything going forward or not, we still have to update the bathroom, because people go there. We have big crowds there, and we're going to need the facilities to support that. The current facilities are rundown. They're failing, and they're not ADA accessible. So we're trying to finish what we've started with beach restrooms, and this is the next step to finish that off, so.
Any further questions, Mrs. Urbano?
Just one statement, please. San Pond holds a respite for those of us in Harwich, different from the beaches. The beaches present a lively party, frisbees, lots of activity. You go to San Pond, and that's a natural stream. You see the grandparents under the pine trees that come right down to the water. The kids are fishing for frogs and little tadpoles. It's delightful. Could we please perhaps consider not overdeveloping this piece of land, not worrying about the revenues, but saving something for the quiet side of those who like that kind of recreation? Thank you.
Any further debate on Article 43? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion is accept and adopt, and the sum is $125,000. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Motion carries. Article 44, this is also a CPC article. It's for Field Improvement Project at White House Field. Yes, Mr. Sherry.
I move that the article be accepted and adopted, and that $55,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Fund, undesignated funds balance for this purpose.
Okay, motions are made under Article 44. It's accept and adopt, and the sum is $55,000 from CPC Funds, undesignated fund balance for this purpose. Again, the CPC Committee considered the project and voted to recommend it to town meeting. Any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 44, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 45, this is the Red River Beach Shoreline Stabilization Project. Do we have a positive motion on this one?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted, as printed in the warrant, and that $100,000 be transferred from Community Preservation Act Funds, open space reserve of $50,000, and $50,000 from FY '20 estimated annual revenue for this purpose.
Okay, the motion under Article 45 is accept and adopt. The total is $100,000. Two sources within community preservation, open space reserve $50,000, and $50,000 from FY '20 estimated annual revenue for this purpose. Again, Article 45 was considered by your CPC Committee, and they voted to, by a 6-0 vote, recommend it to town meeting. Questions on the Red River Beach Shoreline Project? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All of those in favor of the motion is read under Article 45, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It is a vote. That concludes the CPC articles. We're now in Article 46, Chase Library. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $20,000 to help defray the expenses of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library. Set funds to be expended in the direction of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library trustees, and to act fully thereon. Mr. DeCosta.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and that $20,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 46 is accept and adopt. The sum is $20,000. It's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 47, Chamber of Commerce article. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the Howard Center... Excuse me, the Howard Chamber of Commerce, to promote the town, its businesses, and cultural endeavors, and to advance economic development initiatives for and with the town of Harwich. Set money is to be used to manage and fulfill year-round visitor resident business information services, promote and market the town, generate and initiate materials and activities that encourage the establishment growth and sustainability of the businesses in Harwich, and to implement economic development objectives and activities in partnership with the town. Mr. Sherry.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and that $30,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's are made and seconded under Article 47. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $30,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article 48. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sufficient sum of money to supplement the Massachusetts Cultural Council annual allocation for community grant awards to artists, performers, and interpretive scientists who bring events and programs to local venues, which enhance the cultural experience of Harwich citizens of all ages. Positive motion? Mr. Sherry.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and that $3,600 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 48, accept and adopt. The sum is $3,600. Be transferred from available funds or free cash for this purpose. Any debate? Guess not. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 49. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds and/or borrow the sum of $26,170 to cover the town share of matching funds for conducting an update of the Massachusetts Estuaries Project linked watershed model for Pleasant Bay. The funds will be combined with a total of $119,220 in matching funds from the towns of Brewster, Chatham, and Orleans, and $72,610 from the Southeast New England Estuaries Program Watershed Grant awarded to the Pleasant Bay Alliance. The model update is an implementation activity specified in the Pleasant Bay watershed permit issued to the town by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and to act fully thereon. Positive motion? Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $26,170 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 49, accept and adopt. The sum is $26,170, and it's proposed to be transferred... Excuse me, transferred from free cash. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 50. This is a general, proposed general bylaw, proposing to restrict the procurement and dispensing of beverages in plastic containers. Article 50. See if the town will vote to adopt the following as a general bylaw, and insert it in the code of the town of Harwich, is Chapter 125, Article 1, Section 125-1. The procurement by the town of Harwich of either water or any other beverage in plastic containers of any size is prohibited, and the dispensing of water or any beverage in plastic containers is prohibited on town property, and to act fully thereon. Positive motion? I know we have a positive motion out there. Mr. Otto, Patrick Otto.
Yeah, hello. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Patrick Otten. I was responsible for presenting this article and getting it on the warrant. I'm going to move that Article 50 be accepted and adopted and revised to read as follows. Chapter 125, Article 1, Section 125-1. This is what I propose. The procurement by the town of Harwich of either water or any other beverage in single-use plastic bottles of any size is prohibited, and the sale of water or beverage in single-use containers of any size is prohibited on town property. Any town department when engaged in public health and safety operations shall be exempt from this bylaw. The effective date, January 1, 2020.
Could you bring that forward? And I'll read it again, because it's a little different than what you had in your warrant, but he did review it with me ahead of time, and it does appear to be within the scope. Great. Okay. And did I hear a second out there?
Second.
Yes, okay. So the motions are made and seconded. So this is what's being proposed. Same, Chapter 125, Article 1, Section 125-1. The procurement by the town of Harwich of either water or any other beverage, and here's a change, in single-use plastic bottles of any size is prohibited, and the sale... Your warrant said dispensing. This says, "And the sale of water or any beverage in single-use plastic containers of any size is prohibited on town property." Then there's an additional sentence. "Any town department when engaged in public health and safety operations shall be exempt from this bylaw." And then the effective date, January 1, 2020. Mr. Otten.
In addition, for me speaking towards this amended change, may I also request that youth also speak, and as well, nonresidents?
We'll take them as they come. I just need to get the meeting's consent as they come forward.
Thank you. Okay, let me just begin a discussion of where we are and why the amended changes as proposed. So this plastic bottle ban was initiated by Sustainable Practices. That's a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). Why? Thanks to human ingenuity and sought luxury of convenience, we have plastic. Plastic is ubiquitous and persistent. That means it is everywhere and everlasting. It does not biodegrade. It is not easily recycled. Its impact is on our environment, and our health is significant. It's time for change. So let me talk about why the amended changes were proposed. I spoke with town departments and town committees. As a result of those discussions, the amendment was changed as proposed, and let me now just elaborate. The first big change was opposition to the word dispensing. Just what is dispensing? Is that my mother giving me a bottle? Is it another mother giving her child a bottle? Is that dispensing? We don't know. I think a simpler interpretation and narrowing of the scope is simply to say the sale of bottles. When speaking with the fire department, the DPW, and the health department, they need water to do their jobs. Okay, when there's an emergency, there should be an exception. Public health and emergencies, that is town shelters, fighting fires, plowing snow, chasing criminals, catching dogs, all those activities, they can have their water bottles. Okay. There were a couple of objections with respect to expense. Try not to mistake that plastic is recyclable, as is cardboard, metal, and glass. Plastic cannot be recycled. You can attempt disposal. Plastic only degrades. It does not decompose. It only disintegrates into smaller and smaller pieces. Harwich, that is the DPW, Mr. Hooper, pays $200 a ton to remove plastic from Harwich. It's taken to Harwich... It's taken to Rochester, where it sits. There is no recycling market for plastic. Mr. Hooper could elect to pay $60 a ton to incinerate plastic. However, what do you do with the combustibles, the burned byproducts, the ash that's left over? We don't know. So thank you, Mr. Hooper and the DPW, for making a safe choice and simply electing to ship our plastic off Cape. Cost? Sure, a one-bottle, $1 bottle is cheap. However, that's 2,000 times the price that you would pay on your Harwich water bill for the same amount of water. So if you have a $50 quarterly water bill from Harwich Water Department, that becomes $100,000 if you were buying that in bottles. That becomes $400,000 annually. Just think how happy the town of Harwich, Nestle, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, they're laughing all the way to the bank on those prices. Also, one 16-ounce bottle takes five quarts of water to make. That's 10 times the amount of water that's in the bottle just to make the bottle. Other options, Blue Can, which is a canned water source, costs $29 for a case of 24. The kicker is it has a 50-year life shelf, shelf life. The town will no longer have to throw out cases of expired, unopened, unwrapped, sealed, plastic bottles of water into the dumpster. Canned water is available. It's available in metal containers, which are recyclable. It's available in cardboard packaging, which is recyclable. All of a sudden, Mr. Hooper's very pleased again, because he's not paying to get rid of plastic. The question of enforcement. No, we don't need to call in the National Guard to enforce this bylaw. The town is self-regulating. The health department, Megan Eldridge, will review the codes needed to address vendor distribution of our beverages. Another comment was not here. Take this to the state level. Did you know that selectman Ed McManus plans of going to the Mass Legislature requesting a deposit on nip bottles? With that success, I'm very happy to take this proposal to the state legislature and get a deposit for our plastic bottles. Also, the town would install hands-free bottle refill stations at all the beach bathhouses, just like the ones we have here and in town hall. The money-making Cranberry Festival will make the switch from paper to plastic. Again, thank you, Ed McManus. Sustainable Practices will begin a decal identification project of identifying retailers that will fill your personal water bottle. We were also suggested that this be indefinitely postponed. Let me remind you that the Cape is a destination resource. Our summer population triples. We are dependent on clean, plastic-free beaches and woodlands. We are an ocean community. It's Cape Cod. Do you remember in the 1600s, when we could walk across the ocean on the backs of codfish? They're gone. By 2050, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish. I'm going to come back then and propose we change our name to Cape Plastic. Okay, government's here to help protect our health, environment, and well-being. Across the globe, governments are banning plastics. The EU, San Francisco, Maine just banned Styrofoam, Concord, Sudbury, Lincoln. West Tisbury just banned, first ban on commercial plastics. We are accustomed to seeking short-term convenience over long-term sustainability, where dollar price does not reflect the true cost of our impact on our human and environmental health.
So, Mr. Otten, you've got two minutes to wrap up.
Fine, I'm finishing. A municipal ban is letting Harwich make the statement, set the example of behavior we wish to become. Bring awareness and conscientiousness to our single-use plastic. Instead, use your own personable, reusable, refillable containers. We're asking you for your support. Thank you.
Okay. And, Mr. Otten, was there somebody else that wanted to speak that was not from Harwich? You had somebody there?
Yes, we have both a youth that's interested in addressing the town meeting, as well as a nonresident.
A student that's interested in addressing the meeting? Any objections to a student addressing the meeting?
From Harwich.
Well, in all the years I've been doing this since 1976, I've never seen the town of Harwich say no to somebody who wanted to address a meeting. It'll be brief. I'd ask your indulgence. Can the student come forward? You've just got two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jessie
I'm Jessie Swamen. I'm from Harwich. I'd just like to say, last year, my family and I took a trip down the East Coast and throughout the Bahamas. We saw firsthand how plastics are destroying the beautiful ecosystem around us. What we saw was shocking, but this only inspired us to seek change. If we don't change our ways, by 2050, there will be more plastic in our ocean than fish. If this bottle ban passes, our town and other towns on Cape Cod can take a leading role to set an example for the rest of the world. The next generation is counting on you to help groups like Sustainable Practices make changes that will ensure a healthy future for not only Cape Cod, but our nation and world.
Thank you very much. Is there any other debate? I've got Ms. Brown and then Mr. Toby.
Janelle Brown, Harwich Center. I applaud you, Mr. Otten, for bringing this forward because I consider myself an environmentalist. However, I see a lot of holes with this particular article. The first thing that came to mind was Cranberry Harvest Festival and other events, craft shows and whatnot, cultural center events, where plastic is, right now, a mainstay. We have our beer garden out here. I don't know how safe it would be to serve in glass. I don't know how expensive it would be to serve in paper. Further, the vending machines here at the rec, for instance. I know a lot of children who partake in the after-school activities here and use those vending machines. They are outside vendors. I don't know if there are vending companies that will or do already use cardboard or glass exclusively. Beaches, people bringing their own plastic bottles. I don't know, I guess the wording is a little ambiguous for me. I don't know if it means people can't bring their own to the beach, but certainly the garbage will be left, no matter what. So I would like to see something like this phased in. I don't have an amendment and I don't have the solution, but I would like us all to think about phasing something like this in. It's pretty drastic. Truro and Provincetown did pass this. I'd like to see how they do as communities. But before we pass it, I'd like to think about all the ramifications to the conveniences and the everyday life that we know right now. Thank you.
So, just so, before I recognize the next speaker, let me read it again. This is what's prohibited. The procurement, that's procurement, by the town of Harwich of either water or any other beverage in single-use plastic bottles of any size is prohibited. So the town procuring it is prohibited. And then, the sale of water or any beverage in single-use plastic containers is prohibited on town property. So those are the two things that prohibit, just so you get focused. Mr. Toby, you were next.
I'm clarified on the issue. In other words, I can still buy a bottle of water in the supermarket?
Certainly can.
Thank you.
This young lady was next.
Yeah, Marilyn Schlansky, East Harwich. I just want to point out that not so long ago, the town of Harwich banned single-use plastic bags. The sky didn't fall. The world didn't come to an end. For some reason, most of the selectmen, except for, in my memory from Mr. McManus, thought that it was a terrible idea to ban these plastic bags. However, it seems to work very well. And any of us that go to the supermarket, you always see people carrying their own bags or, you know, bringing their stuff home in paper bags. I think it has to be thought about how we go about this, but I think the effort should be made to at least begin to think about how we go about this, to get rid of the plastics in our environment. My daughter worked for Florida Fish and Wildlife. She's a marine biologist. She used to do necropsies on stranded dolphins that would wash up. And a lot of times, what killed them was plastic in their stomachs and their breathing apparatus. This is, you know, we live by the ocean. Marine mammals are important here. The marine environment is important here. And, you know, this is something that we really need to consider as good citizens of the world.
Mr. McManus was next, and then Mr. Kokounas.
When this was presented to the selectmen, I looked at it quite closely. I met with the proposers and had a conversation with them. And then I basically thought about how it would affect one of my other activities in town, being president of the Harwich Cranberry Festival. As you know, we run craft fairs in Brooks Park twice a summer. And we run the festival here at the community center in September. We bring in a number of food vendors that sell drinks, many in plastic bottles. We ourselves sell beer and wine in plastic containers. And I looked at what alternatives were available. And as Mr. Otten said, there currently are some sources of water in paper containers, cartons, water in metal containers, which, right now, are more expensive than what's available in plastic containers, but they are available. For our dispensing of beer, it actually turns out it's cheaper to use paper cups than it does to use plastic cups. There, you know, per 100 cups, it's $3 for paper and it's $5 per 80 cups. So, you know, there's a savings for the festival there. But in... Working with Mr. Otten, one of the other critical things that I asked for was gotten, was that it wouldn't become effective immediately, that it would allow a year for folks to make the transition. In making that transition on behalf of the festival and our food vendors that come, I've been reaching out to some of our local bottling corporations, Coca-Cola, et cetera. They all produce, Coca-Cola produces Dasani in plastic bottles. We all know during times of emergency, hurricanes, tornadoes in the south, when the water systems down there get disrupted, the local bottling, canning authorities turn off the beer or turn off the Coke and bottle water in cans. And so it's a process that's easily for them to do. So I've been reaching out to them to, for those towns on Cape Cod that are making the switch to begin doing runs of water so we can get water in single-use containers for sale at events at a reasonable price. And I think that will become, with enough, a number of towns that are taking this up and will most likely pass this. By next year, we will see a market available in that way. So we won't have to rely on water in plastic bottles being the only source. All other juices, sodas, seltzers, soda water, tonic water are available in cans and glass bottles as they exist now. So it would simply mean eliminating those, the sale of those product lines in the plastic bottles. So I see this as a very reasonable and responsible effort in reviewing the literature on the damage, the plastic that's washed into our oceans and finds elsewhere in the environment. It's, I think, one of the only responsible things for us as humanity to start to do.
Further debate, Mr. Kokounas.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that you join me and vote this down and for a couple of reasons. One is, it's an amendment to our general bylaws that has been brought in by a petitioner. It has not gone through any committee review. We have voted some charter changes. We had the chairman of the charter committee here to explain the charter changes that we went through. When we did the planning board things, we had boards look at them and go over the language. This actually got amended right here on the floor. I don't have a copy of it. I made notes. It's not the right way to do our general bylaws, number one. Number two, this is the town restricting itself from buying bottled water and dispensing it. There's no reason why it needs to be a general bylaw. The Board of Selectmen can put forth a policy, a policy, they don't even need our support on it, that they are going to move towards this direction. So by voting this bylaw down, those of you that are supporting the town not buying plastic bottles, please understand it still can be done through a policy put forward by the board. And then one other thing I noticed when I came in, they had a visual. I want to give you guys a visual. All of you in here that know me know that I own a farm. You have heard me stand up here many a times, especially when we talked about banning plastic bottles, I mean, plastic bags. You know what the problem is? Litterers. Litterers. I take truckloads, literally truckloads, of garbage that people dump on my property. Refrigerators, stoves, couches, plastic bottles, and their trash in paper bags. This bottle is not the problem. That's the problem. We need a bylaw that says we're going to fine you $1,000 if you're caught littering. That's the problem. That bottle would not end up in the ocean if I hadn't just thrown it on the floor. Thank you.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would be remiss if we didn't inform you that the board, the entire Board of Selectmen, voted against this, notwithstanding the last report you received from Mr. McManus. And I'm sure that there'll be an opportunity later for that to turn around. But, having said that, I've been recycling for the better part of 50 years. I remember bundling newspapers and tying them up and bringing them to a recycler in Hackensack, New Jersey. I am deeply concerned about the condition of the ocean and the microorganisms that are eating the broken-down plastic. There's not a bone in anybody's body on the Board of Selectmen that isn't concerned about where we're at. This is not the same as the plastic bag ban because there wasn't a ready replacement for that. There were paper bags that they could immediately start using. Our question is, and there are a lot of questions, that's really the problem with this. And I totally agree with Mr. Kokounas, again, that we haven't thoroughly vetted this. Water coolers are essentially single-use because they are not refilled on-site. They're sent back out. We don't even know whether we've got vendor contracts at the school level that would run beyond the time limit that this specifies. This is somewhat chaotic. While I'm sympathetic with the goal, we have processes for doing things. This really should go to the Charter Review and Bylaw Committee because it's amending our bylaws. All might you've been hearing me say about orderly processes, that's why we get together and do things. We get recommendations from people. They're vetted out. It's a commendable goal, but I would urge you to not adopt this tonight and have this go the right route.
All right, further debate on the motion under Article 50. Yes, ma'am?
I need permission to speak. I am not a Harwich town resident.
Okay, are you from around here? Or can you just tell us what?
I live in Brewster and I'm the executive director for Sustainable Practices, organization that's brought this bylaw forth across the Cape.
Okay. Any objection to two minutes to this person? Hearing none, go ahead.
Hi, I'm here to speak just on behalf of Sustainable Practices, the bylaw, and fundamentally what we're looking for. I understand that many people look for substitutes because we've gotten very used to convenience. But fundamentally, this bylaw is about behavioral change. So it's not necessarily what we're looking for here is for you to think about, what else can I use? But how can I use what I have differently? All these years, I'm 52. I know I shouldn't be announcing my age, but I have no reason not to. I grew up in this country and there was no plastic when I first came here. It's something that came about after about 12 years, my youth. And it actually took firm foothold perhaps over the last 15. It's not something that we have always had. It is something that we've become dependent upon because we've been marketed to it. I am an economist and a professor at Northeastern University right now. And fundamentally, we've used our economic system very unwisely. We purchase on price, but price is not indicative of the true cost of what we use. Almost everything that we have is based on an exploited value. And the one area that we exploit the most is our environment, even though we're fundamentally the most dependent upon it. The three basic things you need to live are air, water, and food. Not food, clothing, and shelter. Oxygen gone, you're gone. And the things that we constantly pollute the most are those three basic things. We started this ban primarily because we wanted to develop a cohesive system across the Cape. We can only change what is sold to us if we have a coalescing element of demand, which means that we can turn to our town governments because fundamentally, we are the government. We have to sometimes curb our freedoms because we are wrong. We don't smoke cigarettes in the same way that we used to 40 years ago. We have to change the way we look, how we consume towards our environment. Plastic bottles are not recycled into new plastic bottles. They're recycled into clothing, which is basically waste diversion, which means they're constantly making new plastic. Thank you so much for indulging me and I hope you will think affirmatively on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here is next.
Noelle Donovan, Alado Farm Lane. I was just wondering what we did before plastic bottles? How did we survive?
Any further debate from any voters? I know I've got more non-voters. Are there any voters over there? If the voters want to come forward, I want to take you first. Go ahead, Mrs. Underhill.
Hi, Judith Underwood, Harwich Center. And I'm also one of your water commissioners, but I'm not speaking tonight as a water commissioner, although I am concerned about our water. I want to just make three points to reiterate some of what I've heard. Number one, if you are 50 or over, close your eyes and raise your hand. You did not grow up with single-use plastic bottles. You did not, okay? I had a long conversation with my mom and my nana. They're both in their late 80s. How did you guys do this back in the day, right? When I played softball as a kid, they had a big thermos thing and we had little paper cups. Okay, so that's point number one. Point number two, when the massive hurricanes hit the Caribbean and Puerto Rico, was devastated. What did our friends at Budweiser do? They shut off the beer and they filled the cans with water. It's a very simple process. And trust me, I know the water industry inside-out. This is a very simple fix for them, very simple. They're just kind of waiting and they're not going to change over until we push. Okay. The final point I want to make is about science and engineering. I spend a lot of time off Cape with scientists and engineers, mostly around MIT, Northeastern, Tufts University. I spent two days up at Draper Labs this winter. I think many of you are probably familiar with Draper Labs. They're one of the largest research institutes that rolled out of MIT. They put satellites in the sky. They put us up on the moon. They do all kinds of amazing engineerings. The entire two days was dedicated to microplastic. Microplastic is when plastic melts down and it gets into fine filigrees. And the fish consume it. We consume the fish. And they are trying to figure out how they can essentially filter the water, how they can get rid of microplastic. And they can't. And in all my years dealing with scientists and engineers, I've never seen them so nervous about a problem. This is a problem they have no conception of how to fix at this point. Hopefully, some of the young people that are here tonight will be able to do that eventually. But right now, it's critical that we stand up and we do this kind of thing. And it's not just about littering, Mister Kokounas. With all due respect, it's not about littering because that bottle disintegrates and it goes into your groundwater. And there are studies throughout Great Britain that show that plastic is in groundwater, not just in the ocean. It's in your drinking water. Maybe not here right now because we haven't done the studies yet, but if Great Britain's water sources are damaged, it's pretty certain that ours are as well. So please, I really think you should vote for this. Thank you. Thank you.
Further debate? Any other voters over there? Mr. Winston?
I cannot speak as eloquently as everyone has spoken on this particular topic, but I can tell you this. I remember very well, a few years ago, coming back to Cape Cod on a bus and looking at the desolate landscaping in the middle of February, and all that you could see were plastic bags on trees, because obviously there was no foliage. We are turning this earth over to our children, and we are not taking care of this earth. We need to take better care of this earth. I understand that this particular article may be difficult to enforce, but I believe the Town of Harwich has the responsibility to at least take the first step. I believe that the children are our future, and this article, I totally believe that we should move forward and vote that plastics, plastic bottles, and so forth and so on. I understand with Mr. Kakounis that nip bottles and all of that sort of thing are litter, but they're also plastic. And I think that if the Town of Harwich would do what they should do, and I know in Delray Beach, Florida, for instance, they just outlawed plastic straws. We have to drink out of a paper straw. I know a paper straw falls apart, but you know what? It's an inconvenience. Deal with it. I just believe we should move forward. Thank you, kids.
Any further debate on this article?
Yes.
Mr. Weiser?
I would very much like to hear from a few more of the young people. Is that possible, Mr. Moderator?
I'm trying to get the voters first, because I think it's important that they have an opportunity.
Well, I'm offering to yield my time to a young person. May I do that?
No, we don't yield time.
In that case, I'll speak on their behalf.
You have the floor, Mr. Weiser.
This proposal, imperfect though it may be, is not asking very much of us. The gentleman who asked the question, "Will we still be able to buy a bottle of water, a plastic bottle of water at the supermarket?", the answer is yes. This is a very, very, very small gesture on our part to make ourselves responsible as a community for not participating any further in the degradation of the environment by the use of single-use plastics. By doing so, we make an example of what's possible so that we can move forward, and maybe we can actually habituate ourselves back to using paper and glass and metal instead of plastic. It's not inconceivable, it is possible. And part of it is to start somewhere. We owe it to the young people to start here. Please vote in favor of this. It's not a big sacrifice that we're asking you to make.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Elizabeth Harder. For those of you who don't know, I'm your delegate to the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates, but I'm speaking as a personal citizen of Harwich. If you want to go on YouTube and watch me get yelled at by the Speaker of the Assembly last week because I really lost it when somebody was denying climate change, you can see that. And you'll be able to see that I believe wholeheartedly in doing everything possible we can to mitigating the climate change disaster that is facing us. Having said that, I don't want to vote for this. It is not the way we go about doing our town. A private petition should not be allowed to change our bylaws, and as Don Howell said, we need this to go through the proper procedures, because if it does, I think we could make this even stronger. I wouldn't be against banning the sale of all plastic bottles in this town, like we did with plastic bags. I think we could even go further with this. I just don't think this is the way to do it. Thank you.
Any further voters? Yes, in the middle.
Hi, my name's Clara McClardy. I live in Pleasant Bay Road, East Harwich. I am the mother of this young boy who's been waiting to speak and been denied a chance, and I think I can speak for him. I have five children between the ages of four and 12. We're raising them here in Harwich, and we have changed many of our habits to avoid the use of plastic in all areas. It's daunting when you have to change a habit, but once you do it, it's a new habit, and there's absolutely no problem with it. As far as this being the proper channel, I think that my son would want to observe that the mess that we're in right now environmentally happened through the proper channels. Nobody realized the results of plastic when it was just a new idea that actually we thought was going to save the environment because we wouldn't have to use all these other resources because we could just manufacture this stuff. But anyways, this is a small gesture. We, in my family, realize that no matter how hard we work and no matter how many things we change, we can't save the ocean. The problem is enormous, the problem has already escalated beyond what anyone would want it to be, and will continue to, because even if all of Harwich did everything they could, you know, the problem's huge. But there is such a wonderful satisfaction in doing what you can with what you have. That is what my family wants to do. I feel that the blessing of having all these children has been to see through their eyes what they see. Children are just, they're not jaded yet. And I went to Shaw's with my eight-year-old daughter. We just got the most recent National Geographic with a big illustrated issue showing all of the impoverished people in third-world nations who pick apart our trash so that they can recycle little bits of this and little bits of that. And we pulled up at Shaw's, and there were plastic beach toys, plastic floaties, plastic beach chairs, plastic shovels, plastic junk for the beach all over. And she said, "Mom, why are they trying to destroy the ocean?" She also said to me, when we went inside the store, "Mom, why are we buying plastic bags to put our garbage in? I grew up always having a plastic bag liner in our can, never questioned it." But looking through her eyes, I realized, yeah, that is kind of silly. And we researched it on the internet, we found out there are tons of people who don't use plastic bag liners. You can avoid throwing away messy things, most of it should be composted probably, and you can use, say, a tortilla chip bag or something that's not recyclable, which is already in your trash, for the gookey stuff. But anyway, I'm not trying to tell you guys ideas. There's tons of information out there, there's tons we can do. But I want to say that we have a healthier view of ourselves and the world when we do what we can with what we have. This is a gesture we can make. This is not going to save the world. This is a gesture, and if it's not the proper channels to go through, if it's not the exact right way to make the law, or bylaw, or amendment, that really isn't the point. We have a devastating problem in our oceans, and actually, it's even in our air. We're breathing plastic from our puller-fleece clothing and all this junk. Whether or not we use the exact right wording and the exact right method is really besides the point. We want to make a statement that this is huge and that we care, we're going to do what we can with what we have.
Any further debate? This gentleman here on the right.
Stan Pastusak, East Harwich. I agree with most of the speakers that plastics are a problem. Growing up, also, as a matter of fact, I was thinking about this morning what I used growing up, and there were no plastic water bottles, there were no reusable or single-use water bottles. There wasn't much plastic of anything. However, saying that, I do agree with Mr. Kakounis. I don't think this is the right way because we're specifically limiting it to the town. We talked about single-use trash bags that we got rid of, but we did it town-wide, not just saying just the town property or facilities are going to ban it all. We did it town-wide. And if that's what you're going to do, do it town-wide, because again, that's going to eliminate things being on the roadside, like the plastic, uh, single-use bags used to be up in the trees, which you don't see them as much now, but you see all the other things, the nip bottles. I think in the last tour of trash, they had 1,300 nip bottles in two hours. Okay? You see tarps, plastic tarps along the roadside, plastic bags, plastic buckets, everything. So I agree that plastic is a problem, but I don't believe in passing this warrant as a bylaw.
Any further debate? This gentleman here, and then I've got one over here.
Charles Curtis, East Harwich. I agree with...
Can't hear you, you gotta speak right into it.
Closer, is this better? Yes.
That's better, thank you.
Charles Curtis, East Harwich. I agree with the last couple of speakers, but I agree, this doesn't go far enough. If we want to make a change, I think we need to start with taking it off our shelves, and in particular, taking it off our beaches, our harbors, and our ponds. And if it's banned there, where I think Harwich could make the greatest impact in this. Thank you.
This gentleman over here to the left.
John Eldridge, I move to end debate.
Okay, so a motion's been made to move the question, which means to terminate debate. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Okay, it's a non-debatable motion, it requires a three-fourths majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 50, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I want to read the motion to you one more time, since you don't have it exactly in front of you, before we take a vote. It's to adopt a general bylaw of the town, so it requires just a simple majority. The procurement by the Town of Harwich of either water or any other beverage in a single-use plastic bottles of any size is prohibited. And the sale of water or any beverage in single-use plastic containers of any size is prohibited on town property. Any town department when engaged in public health and safety operations shall be exempt from this bylaw. The effective date of the bylaw as proposed is January 1st, 2020. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I'm gonna have to take a standing count. If the tellers are here, you'd come forward, please. And you have your same two sections. Tom, you're gonna handle the back wall, they're gonna stay in the bleachers. Mr. Robinson, you know where you're going on this side? Okay? Hold on a second. Okay, so we're on Article 50. We're gonna take a standing count now, you need to hold up your purple voter tag when you vote. All those in favor of the bylaw, favor of that motion I read, please rise and be counted. Those in favor? Mr. Robinson? Mr. Evans?
75.
75. And Mr. Banks?
29.
29. All those in opposition, those opposed, please rise and be counted.
40.
40. Mr. Robinson? Mr. Banks? Mr. Evans? So those in favor of the bylaw, 235; those in opposition, 194. It carries. Article 51, see if the town will vote to request the Selectmen to authorize town law enforcement and town officials to refrain from using town funds and/or town resources to enforce federal immigration laws to the extent permissible by law, including but not limited to 8 U.S.C. 1373 and 8 U.S.C. Section 1644, in keeping with current practices, unless presented with a criminal warrant, court order, or other evidence of probable cause as required by the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution to act fully thereon. This is a non-binding petition resolution. There's no positive motion from the Finance Committee, is that correct? Okay, I'll turn to the petitioner, Ms. Rudden.
Good evening.
Do you have a motion to make?
I move that we adopt... I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Okay, it's been, the motion's been made under Article 51 to accept and adopt as printed. Ms. Rudden.
I'm Maria Rudden, residing at 259 Spruce Road in East Harwich. As you see, I'm a person of color. I'm also an immigrant from the Philippines who came here over 40 years ago. As a first-generation immigrant, I love this country because I chose it. For me, the United States was a beacon of light and hope against the savage oppression of the Ferdinand Marcos regime that endangered, harassed, intimidated, arrested, tortured, and ultimately assassinated members of my family. I spent my wedding day in Washington, DC, sobbing because none of my family were given exit permits to attend. I speak tonight on behalf of the town's undocumented immigrant residents, especially those who are not here tonight because they are afraid. On January 2017, the federal administration introduced an aggressive immigration enforcement agenda that relies on the participation of state and local law enforcement to identify and detain undocumented immigrants. This agenda had far-reaching consequences in our immigrant communities and raised major public safety, public health, and economic concerns. Just yesterday, Federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, that is ICE, announced a brand-new program called the Warrant Services Officer Program. Under it, local law enforcement officers would arrest and detain the undocumented on behalf of ICE, even though local policies would prevent this. It is in response to this agenda that is becoming ever harsher that I'm here in front of you tonight. Article 51 is a non-binding resolution that asks the town to affirm and to publicly communicate Harwich's current policy regarding immigration enforcement. In fact, our town officials and police have not and do not act now as an arm of Federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE. That is currently the job and responsibility of federal authorities. Our officials and law enforcements do not check now on whether persons that they meet in their ordinary duties happen to have proper immigration papers. I deeply appreciate and support our police for what they do now. Make no mistake, if a serious crime is committed, whether by citizen or noncitizen, that person must be arrested. But if someone commits a non-arrestable infraction, like a traffic stop, it isn't the responsibility or the... or the practice of our local officials to check for immigration status. The undocumented here on the Cape are mostly visa overstayers, not border crossers. Simply being in the U.S. without documentation is not a crime, it is a civil misdemeanor. When everyone feels free to approach police or other officials, including people concerned about their immigration status, then it is more likely that suspicious activity will be reported, that people will step forward as witnesses, that an abused woman can come out of the shadows and ask for help, that people will call during emergencies. This approach is favored by towns and police chiefs across the country. Reports show that decreases in crime come about with this approach, just as multiple studies show that immigrants in general are less likely to commit crimes than U.S.-born persons. Those are facts. Nothing in this article asks Harwich to violate U.S. laws. It does not ask for withholding information from federal authorities. If ICE requests that someone be held in detention and includes a proper judicial warrant, the town will comply. What this resolution reaffirms is that our town does not use its people or resources to function as ICE. This respects the separation of powers specified in the Tenth Amendment of our Constitution. This article does not make Harwich a sanctuary town, it does not provide shelter for criminals, it does not contradict the law. Its goal is safe safety for everyone, including those vulnerable due to a climate of intolerance. It does not take on the national question of illegal immigration in the United States. Brewster, Dennis, Eastham, Wellfleet, Provincetown, the towns in Nantucket, and last night, Mashpee, these have already passed similar resolutions. The police chief of one of those towns said that since the resolution passed in his town, two undocumented women reported domestic abuse, just as the resolution had wanted. Our current police chief, David Gilmet, has said publicly that he supports this petition ninety-eight percent for its educational and communication value. His concern is that the petition language stops him from answering ICE should they, for example, ask for the address of someone the police had arrested and released. The chief can use his wise judgment as to whether and how to respond to his ICE colleagues because this is, as I said earlier, a non-binding resolution. Who is this about in Harwich? People who wash dishes in our restaurants, people who build, paint, and maintain our properties, who take care of our beloved elderly. These are people we do not see, we don't know, we don't associate with, living in the back streets of our town. People who want the things that we want, to better their lives, to take care of their families, to pay taxes, and to contribute to the community. The Cape needs them so that our economy can function, especially as we welcome summer tourists. We need our voices raised on their behalf, our hearts softened for their benefit, our souls opened to lives not unlike our own. I believe that America, a nation of immigrants, has not become so narrow and so afraid that we wish to punish families who have come here for the very same reasons that our forefathers and our foremothers came. We want to remember who we are and where we came from. The important reasons to pass this petition now are twofold. First, to publicly affirm Harwich's stance and to assure residents, visitors, and workers of the kind of community we will continue to be. And second, because it's the right thing to do. I ask that you support this petition. Thank you.
Any further debate on the petition? Mr. Kukounis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm gonna ask that you not support it, and I'm gonna ask you not to support it for a couple of reasons. One is it's non-binding, so I guess it really doesn't really matter what the language says. But I have a little bit of a personal stake in this matter. My one and only daughter is on her way to become a police officer, and I will support nothing, nothing, that ties her hands when she's out doing her job. Same way, I'm not gonna support this tonight because our police department does not intimidate people, does not harass them, and does not torture them currently. There's no need for us to put anything in their path when they're doing their job. I'm gonna take one more minute just to read to you because this is a very, very... I have a lot of personal interest in this. Two-eight-seven-G program that was passed and that the, our current Barnstable County Sheriff uses in working with ICE was a huge thing that happened a year ago, and I basically lost my election, reelection, because of it, because I supported the two-eight-seven-G program, and this ties directly to it. But let me just read to you, one month, March of this year, what happens when our police department works with the sheriff department and works with ICE. Thirty-seven-year-old man from Ecuador, OUI, twice. Thirty-seven-year-old male from Brazil, abuse, sexual abuse, and a restraining order violation. Twenty-five-year-old male from Jamaica, assault on a family member. Fifty-nine-year-old Brazilian, second OUI. Twenty-five-year-old Jamaican, B and E in the nighttime, a felony, and vandalizing property. Thirty-one-year-old male from Russia, assault and battery on a police officer, and assault and battery to intimidate and disorderly conduct. Forty-one-year-old male from Brazil, abuse, preventive order, and assault and battery, strangulation, and suffocation. Fifty-eight-year-old female from England, third OUI. Fifty-six-year-old female from Brazil, third OUI, driving without a license, assault and battery on a family member, B and E misdemeanor, trespassing, possession of an open bottle of alcohol. Question was asked, are these from Harwich? No, they're from Barnstable County, from Barnstable County, though, from towns from Bourne all the way to Provincetown. There was ten that I read. These are the people that the two-eight-seven-G program captures and brings to court and makes them pay for what they have done wrong. And yes, deports them when they're here illegally. So if we did not have the two-eight-seven-G program, and I'm gonna go out on a limb, I know this is, this is a big thing to say, but if you support this resolution tonight, you're gonna have these people as your neighbors, I guarantee it, and we don't want them here.
Any further debate? Gentlemen in the middle.
Jeffrey Hadley, Scotland Way in Harwich. I'd just like to second the main point that the previous speaker made, that I don't want to take away on this issue the discretion of our local law enforcement when it comes to issues that have to do with discretion and not warrants from ICE. Please vote against this article. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
I am disgusted by what Mr. McMahon, Mr. Kukounis was talking about.
We're not gonna get into...
Now, wait a second.
Women, we're not, no, no.
I won't say anything.
We're not gonna get into personalities.
To suggest that we are surrounded by criminals who will not be taken, um, be arrested, he's suggesting... Look, I, I've been hearing this kind of thing all the time. I don't want our policemen to do anything except what they are told to do. This suggestion here is saying we want to publicize a policy that is already in place. We're not setting up something new, we're not standing in the way of the police, we are saying we are grateful to the police for what they've been doing, we want them to continue to do it and to make it possible for people who are here beyond their visas to come forward if they are in danger, to say, cope to the police and say, "My boyfriend has just beaten me to a pope, but I won't dare do it if I'm afraid they're gonna ask whether I'm here legally or not." I just think this is so ugly that I just want to say, "This is our policy, we're not changing anything, we're just saying, let's put it out so people know that and they will feel less afraid."
Okay, I've got this gentleman over here to the right.
Reverend Christian Holick, East Harwich, minister there, thirteen years, visitor. Do I have permission for two minutes?
I'm sorry, you're not a voter?
I am not a voter. I'm minister in East Harwich last thirteen years, I'm a visitor.
Okay. Any objection to hearing from him? We're gonna try and keep it just two minutes each person because it's just a resolution. Go ahead.
First, I am grateful, and St. Peter's Lutheran Church in East Harwich is grateful for the Harwich Police, for the ways they have worked with us, helped us, and continue to help us work through any safety concerns. The emphasis that Chief Gilmet and the department have placed on community engagement and community service, building trust, is compelling and excellent. I speak in favor of this petition, this non-binding resolution. I think it strengthens public safety, allowing anyone and everyone, regardless of status, to report a crime or safety concern. This is not a referendum on immigration quotas or how we best go about immigration reform. I think it's a question of keeping the central focus of Harwich Police on the well-being, safety, and strength of the local community. I have a colleague on Cape who went in the middle of the night, a minister who went in the middle of the night to be with a parishioner who was the victim of a domestic assault. Neighbors had called the police, the victim whose visa had expired did not want to press charges. The very next day, the victim was relying on the perpetrator to take her to Boston to file for a visa extension. Those who are not citizens are especially vulnerable, have little recourse, and are often exploited. Independence House, the Cape's leading counseling and advocacy center for addressing and preventing domestic and sexual violence, can attest to this. This petition seeks to let immigration officials do their work and lets local police do their work to ensure that all people in our community, even the most vulnerable, can report crimes they witness or are victims of. The petition ensures that we continue to operate as we have been. I think it makes for a safer community, is logical, and is also compassionate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
I have two points. Mr. Kukounis's first statement, that it was somehow preventing his daughter from doing her job, those people that you mentioned were all arrested, they would still be arrested, they should be arrested. As far as your daughter being a police officer, I have nothing but the utmost respect for her. Believe me, I do. But people are afraid to come forward, like it's been mentioned many times, people are afraid to come forward to report an abuse because if they're not a, if they're here illegally, they're afraid that they'll be deported, and they may even have children and family members here. So I just had to say that much, thank you.
Okay. This gentleman over here.
Steve Scannell from Harwich. I don't like the tone of punishing families that another speaker mentioned, I just don't like that because I'm a person who is in favor of enforcement of our laws, that I am punishing families somehow, I just don't like that, don't put that on me. If I want law enforcement, that, I was always taught as a boy, you know, we have our laws, the laws have to be enforced, if you want to change the laws, you go ahead and change the laws, and that's the way this country is. Well, that is not the way this country is now. We have a climate of intolerance, I object to that wording as well. I want the laws enforced, I'm not an intolerant person, I simply want our laws of the land to be enforced, and I want all the laws to be enforced by every law enforcement official. I want the police to enforce immigration laws, and if there's someone here illegally, I want them to be taken before a magistrate and go to a hearing and boot them out or let them do the paperwork and stay. But no, this business of looking the other way, if you want to look the other way, look to Nantucket. I lived out there for twenty years. I was a painter, someone mentioned painting, oh, the people that do the painting and the building and the maintenance. You have to leave your town if you can not compete in the marketplace, and if the marketplace is loaded with foreign workers, you just cannot afford to pay the rent, and I don't know how they do it, but they do it. So I think that this is clearly against the American interest, and it's against the American spirit, that we are looking the other way while people commit infractions of the law. And I think we're in a bad spot because the rich people love this cheap labor. Do you want the Cape to be like Nantucket? It's crawling with foreign labor, that's all you see. They don't want local labor, they just want the foreigners. And apparently, I guess, there are a lot of people in this country who just want to load this country up with the poor unwashed masses from everywhere in the world, we don't need it, I object to it. We need to enforce our laws.
This gentleman here? Can you introduce yourself? You're a voter?
Yes, I am. My name is Michael Rudden, I live on Spruce Road in East Harwich. I rise tonight in support of Article 51. Now let me tell you why. There's a critical relationship between immigration and Harwich's hospitality and tourist industry. Yes, comprehensive national immigration reform is long overdue, but that doesn't seem to be on the horizon. Regardless of your views on national immigration issues, and there are pros and cons on both sides, locally, we can find common ground. Tonight, in this room, we gather not as independents, not as Republicans, not as Democrats. Instead, tonight, we gather as neighbors, speaking over fences that divide us. Whether you were born here or whether you're a Washashore, we speak and vote as neighbors, and we're bound together by the love of the town we live in. But not all voices are being heard tonight. Our undocumented but otherwise law-abiding neighbors will not speak tonight. They are understandably afraid, so we must speak for them. In addition, the voices of local restaurant owners, restaurant managers, home aid employees, and home maintenance firms who depend on immigration workers to survive will not be heard tonight. Why would they dare? It is important to note that by law, these businesses must first advertise jobs to American workers before they can hire temporary non-citizens. Few apply. Harwich, like many Cape communities, continues to extend the tourist and hospitality businesses into the shoulder seasons of fall and spring. This brings in additional commercial tax revenue and enables our favorite restaurants to remain open longer. However, with the recent quota reductions in H2B temporary work visas, these local businesses are hard-pressed to find shoulder-season workers. Once local students return to school and temporary student workers from overseas, J-1 visas expire. Increasingly, these businesses that drive our local economy must depend on full-time immigrant workers to fill that gap, and documented or not, they are increasingly harder to find. We need these hard-working neighbors who contribute so much to what we all love about Harwich. Friends, tonight, some of your neighbors need our help. I urge you to recognize their important contribution to Harwich's quality of life by passing Article 51. Thank you.
Got this lady right over here, and then the gentleman in the middle.
Sherri Armstrong, South Harwich. I'm just here tonight, many of us were reminiscent of the non-plastic containers we used in our youth. I'm reminiscent of the education I received as a second-generation American, as America is a melting pot. These are my neighbors in Harwich, and while we can point to people who are immigrants to our country who commit crimes, we can point to our own people who live here and have lived here for hundreds of years who also commit crimes. But we should not be acting out of fear, we should be acting out of compassion. As an educator, I teach students many times who live in fear now because their parents are undocumented. These children, through no fault of their own, have come to live in our... These children, through no fault of their own, have come to live in our community. Their parents are law-abiding citizens. They contribute to our economy. They are doing many of the jobs that our own people who live here are either, unfortunately, like myself, too old to do, or because other people don't want to do them. I'm asking all of you tonight to vote with your hearts about our own neighbors and to look at the surrounding towns that have also supported this type of commitment and resolution because I think it's what makes us truly human, and all of us deserve that same treatment. Treatment of being empathetic, compassionate, sympathetic, and most of all, truly a good neighbor. Thank you.
Gentleman in the middle.
My name is Joe Burns. Can you hear me all right now?
Can now.
My name is Joe Burns, and just a couple of comments. I heard a listing of immigrants and the crimes they commit. I'm not going to dispute that list because crimes are committed by immigrants, they're committed by tourists, they're committed by residents, Native Americans, people born here, people who came here last year, 100 years ago. We all among us have criminals. It seems to me that the issue here is how do we stop the crime? And the way we stop the crime is by having people able to report those crimes. That helps the police. It does not hinder them. You stop a crime, you stop a future crime as well. Next crime that isn't reported, you may be the victim. The other issue I'd like to talk about is how foreigners are taking away jobs. That has nothing to do with this issue, but it was brought up. I'm sure they said the same thing about my great-grandparents when they came from Ireland, when they came from Russia, when they came from Germany, and I'm sure they said that about your ancestors too. This is who we are, and this is who we should remain. That's all.
Thank you. This gentleman over here.
Jay Walpole, Howard Center. I want to applaud the police chief and his staff for their current policy. I'm a retired federal special agent and federal regulator, and I had extensive training in my field, and on top of that training, I was required, not required, I chose to get an extra insurance policy to cover any liability issues that would arise out of my enforcing the legal requirements for the federal government. Our local police are regulated by ordinances and by state law. They're trained in those venues. They are not trained in federal law. Are you prepared to take on the risk of our local police being sued, the town being sued for what was, what could be an attempt to enforce a federal law that wasn't understood properly? I can only suggest to you that our police chief is doing the right thing for the right reasons. Thank you.
This woman in the middle.
Diana Gross. I was just acrimonious with certain things that I've heard. To think that our police, it's an insult to our police, to say that as an individual police officer, they should subjectively have carte blanche to do whatever they think they should do to achieve their goal of law enforcement. I mean, there's a chief, and there's basically levels of command that work beautifully, and they have my utmost respect, but it is not the kind of thing that is, is unnecessary nor is it effective to just subjectively do whatever it is you think you need to do to create your end. The other thing that really bothers me, and especially as an educator, we're taught to obey the law, and we obey the law. We obey the law. How about the time of Jim Crow? How about the time of slavery? You have to teach ethical consciousness and drive your mind, your heart, your spirit in the direction of what is consciously and ethically right. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you. This gentleman over here. Just a word, we are going to try and finish tonight, so let's try and focus on new information on this article if we can. It is a resolution. There's been some great debate. I don't want to cut anybody off, but we've still got a lot of work to do. Just throwing that out there. This gentleman to my right.
Jim Bear from Harwich Port. I move to end the debate.
So a motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's made and seconded to move the question, which is to terminate debate on Article 51. Non-debatable motion requires a three-fourths majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 51, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I'm going to have to take it again. If it isn't unanimous, I have to take a standing count. So, because it's a three-fourths, I can't call it. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 51, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we'll now go to the motion on Article 51. And the motion before you is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 52. To see if the town will vote to support proposed legislation providing for the creation of a special commission to investigate the features of the official seal and motto of the Commonwealth and ensure that they accurately reflect and embody the historic and contemporary commitments of the Commonwealth to peace, justice, liberty, and equality, as well as basic respect for the members of native nations residing in the Commonwealth and to act fully thereon. Positive motion, Mr. DeCosta? Does anyone have a positive motion on this? You're welcome to use the podium if you'd like. You come up here and make it first, and then you can hand it to me.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Article 52 has been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant. Yes, you may.
Hi. My name is Roseanne Shapiro, and I've lived in Harwich for over eight years. And I just want to thank all present for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening on an issue about which I care very deeply, the way in which our state is represented officially to its citizens and to those beyond its borders. All 50 states have official flags and seals that vary according to their history and in general reflect a unique aspect of that history. Of these, only two have come under sustained criticism as symbols of racism, the state flag and seal of Mississippi, which incorporates the Confederate battle flag, and the Massachusetts state flag and seal, which feature a colonial broadsword hanging over the head of a Native American man and a motto in Latin which begins with the words in English, and I quote, "By the sword we seek peace." Every two years since 1984, a bill has been introduced in the state legislature to change our flag and seal. Despite such efforts, these bills have languished in the State House. As stated by John Peters Jr. of the Mashpee Wampanoag, current director of the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs, "It is long past time to," and I quote, "consider our shared history and be cognizant of the genocidal accuracy of the symbolism that the seal portrays." The state seal appears on every official document issued by every state department. That seal emphasizes an historical relationship of dominance, including genocide, internment, and enslavement between European colonists and Native Americans living in what is now the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With the approach of the 400th anniversary in 2020 of the European colonists' arrival in Plymouth and Provincetown, now, now, is the time to finally consider making that seal, I'm sorry, making changes to the flag and seal that reflect a relationship between and among all residents of the Commonwealth that is respectful and equal, that acknowledges the harm done in the past, and support all of us, all of us, to move into a future in which the inherent dignity and worth of every resident of the Commonwealth is acknowledged. Making these changes in our official symbols is a way to demonstrate concretely the underlying changes that have already taken place, as well as those that still need to be made. We are fortunate to have a number of state legislators in both chambers who have come forward to craft bills that will create a commission to investigate, and I quote, "the features of the official seal and motto of the Commonwealth, including those which have been controversial or misunderstood or are no longer meaningful to the citizens of the Commonwealth, and to ensure that they accurately reflect and embody the historic and contemporary commitments of the Commonwealth to peace, justice, liberty, and equality, and to spreading the opportunities and advantages of education." Current residents of Harwich, as the descendants of people who fought under the state flag during the Civil War, should be given the opportunity to express their opinion on what is essentially a question of racial justice today. To date, 18 cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth have already voted to support the bills currently before the legislature. Most recently was Eastham just last night. The issue is currently being taken up on a number of, at a number of town meetings on the Cape. I ask that Harwich residents be given the opportunity to make their voices heard on this very, very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Any further debate on the motion under Article 52? Yes, Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you. Although I appreciate the sentiment, the Finance Committee voted to indefinitely postpone this article. We think that changing the state flag should be done at the state level, but the proponents have brought this question to Harwich to talk about the state flag here in Harwich. And I went back through and wanted to talk a little bit about what it meant to an earlier generation in Harwich, those who did fight in the Civil War. Town of Harwich sent 341 people, more than any other town on Cape Cod, to the Civil War. If you go down Oak Street, if you go down the hallway here, you can see one of the names right on the Our Hall of Fame, and that's Ace of Leonard Jones, a black man who fought in the Civil War. He was in the 6th Massachusetts Regiment. He fought under this flag, and he was a former selectman. He was one of the first people in Harwich to own an automobile. He built his house on Oak Street, which still stands, and he fought under this flag. At the Battle of Gettysburg, there were 38 people from Harwich there in 20 different regiments fighting at the Battle of Gettysburg. We were at Appomattox. We've had many people who have died in the Civil War fighting for that flag, and I just think that the state should deal with the flag. If they come down and tell Harwich that we're changing it, great. But until then, I would prefer that we here in Harwich keep that flag sacred for those who have already fought for it. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 51? Yes, this gentleman here.
Yes, Jeff Schwartz, Division Street. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to see this article accepted and adopted as printed in the town warrant. The reasoning given by the Finance Committee for not changing the flag is, to me, the same as the one used to justify keeping the Confederate flag, a symbol hurtful to African-Americans. And the, I'm curious as to what that African-American soldier who died fighting against slavery would think about keeping the Confederate flag, because that's essentially the same thing that is happening with the state flag in relationship to indigenous peoples. I'd like to see us honor the dead and the living by eliminating from our current flag a symbol that is hurtful to our indigenous brothers and sisters. I'm hopeful we can treat them as we'd like to be treated, build inclusion rather than divisiveness, and work together to create a flag that respectfully represents all Massachusetts citizens. Thank you very much.
Anything further? All right, I'll give you one more. You got two times speaking, and that's it.
Okay, that's good. Okay, I believe I can address the Finance Committee or Mr. DeCosta's concerns about this article, namely legislative jurisdiction and respect for the accuracy of town history and for town residents who fought under the state flag during the Civil War. The first sentence of the article states clearly an intention to seek support from residents of Harwich for legislation proposed by members of the state legislature, thus acknowledging the need for the legislative process to take place at the state level. We are not trying to usurp that process. With regard to respect for the accuracy of town history, as well as remembering and honoring town residents who fought under the state flag during the Civil War, we can continue to honor those past sacrifices by updating, oops. Okay, by updating the flag to bring it in line with current sentiment, to bring it in line with sentiment that says, we need to respect our Native American population, and by doing that, we are also honoring the lives of those who gave their lives for justice, just like we are doing by supporting the legislation at the state level. Thank you.
Further debate, this gentleman over here.
Jim Bear from Harwich Port. I again move to end debate.
Do I hear a second? Okay, so we have a motion to terminate debate. It's non-debatable, requires a three-fourths majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 51, so signify by, excuse me, I'm on the wrong one. On Article 52, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. So I'll take it one more time, so to try and avoid a standing count. All those in favor of terminating debate, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we'll now go to the motion on Article 52, and the motion is to accept and adopt the article as printed in your warrant. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I will have to take a standing count on that. Tell us, please, come forward. Okay, same sections, Ed. Same sections, Mary Ellen. Appreciate your time tonight. We might have a few more after this. Now, we're going to finish. So we're on Article 52. We're taking a standing count. The motion is to accept and adopt the article as printed. All those in favor of that motion, please rise and show your voter card. All those in favor. Mary Ellen?
20.
20. Mr. Banks?
15.
Mr. Robinson?
78.
78. Mr. Evans? Seventy-eight. All those opposed to the motion, all those in opposition, please rise and show your voter card.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Mr. Robinson? Mr. Banks? Twenty-three. Those in favor, one hundred and ninety-one. Those in opposition, two thirteen. The motion does not carry. We're now in Article 53. I'm not gonna read this in its entirety. It is a proposed, single-use, plastic straw ban by law. Hope you've had a chance to look through it. Do I have a positive motion? Finance Committee have a positive motion? Is there a positive motion from the petitioner?
Can I move for a positive motion?
Are you a resident?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Yes, you can.
Okay.
The motion would be simply, "Accept and adopt the article as printed in the warrant."
I move to Article 53 as presented in the warrant.
Okay. And your name, just so I can put it on this motion?
I am Andrew Matheson, a grade eight history teacher across the street at Monomoy Regional High School.
Great. Okay, is there a second? Okay. Motion is made in second on Article 53. It's to accept and adopt the proposed bylaw as printed. Mr. Matheson, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I am Andrew Matheson, a history teacher at Monomoy Regional High School. I ask to, permission to read a statement written by the students connected to this article?
Okay.
Right. "We are eighth-grade students at Monomoy Regional High School. We are part of a project citizen in Mr. Dixon and Mr. Matheson's civics class. Project citizen is where each of our classes choose an issue we want to address and hope to discover a solution in our community. Our class has chosen ocean pollution as our big issue, so tonight we decide to propose a plastic straw ban in the town of Harwich. Plastic straws and other products are often seen strewn on our town beaches and recreational areas. Debris often ends up on our beaches and then in oceans, where some of it gets eaten by marine animals that mistake it for food. The majority of pollutants going to oceans are plastics and straws. Are a big contributor to the ever-growing pollution in our oceans. For too long, we have used these plastic straws and polluted our environment. It is possible to stop the use of plastic straws. Already, the Entertainment Cinema in Dennis has given up plastic straws and turned to paper. Paper straws, metal straws, and even pasta straws work just as well and don't harm the environment nearly as much. Decreasing the amount of towns that are selling plastic products decreases the amount of waste. Seeing to this, Province Town has already passed this proposal, and many other towns are considering it as such, Sandwich, Born, and Mashpee. Our neighboring town, Chatham, held a Board of Selectmen meeting to review our proposal, and it is now moving on to town meeting. We hope our proposal for a plastic straw ban has made an impact in the town's decision tonight on you. Also, on a personal level, as an educator, Mr. Moderator, I would like to greatly thank you for allowing the students that you did to speak tonight. As an educator, also, it's, it's a dream to have your students become passionate about an issue and be connected to the community. And many of the students here tonight are here because they are passionate about that issue. So, again, I think it's important to remember that those are possible future voters in your town, and some of them could actually be possible elected officials. So, thank you."
Thank you. And Mr. Matheson, I should say that we always welcome students at our town meeting. We've always had them. And we appreciate very much you teachers getting that nexus between your students and town meeting. Thank you. Any further debate on the motion under Article 53? Yes, sir. You're gonna have to lean down a little. There you go.
That's better. I think this is a really bad idea, based on the fact that, I think, as individuals, if we can't be, if we can't decide effectively what to drink our consumables with, never mind out of, I just, you know, I don't think it speaks well for just our, our culture in terms of, you know, how we value individualism and freedom. And the second point I'd like to make is that, you know, if we're going to ban something, I think we have to really make sure that it's, it's to accomplish a very important goal that's making a really, really big negative impact on society. I'm not sure, you know, we can argue about the bottles, but the straws, I'm really having a hard time seeing that the straws are gonna have that much of an impact, given the fact that we're banning something, we're taking away people's discretion on such a, it seems small, but in principle, I think is very big. So, that's all.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 53? Yes, Miss Underhill.
Hi, Judith Underwood, Harwich Center and one of your water commissioners. Just to reiterate that we're talking about plastic straws here, and they break down just like plastic bottles, and they get into the water supply, and they get into the oceans, and they get into the fish, and they get into our bodies as well. So, if you are forty and over, close your eyes for one quick second. Just raise your hand if you remember the only time as a kid you had a plast, you had a straw, was like if you were really sick, right? And it was a paper straw. We can do this, folks. We can do this. And our kids are leading the way on this, so let's support them.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Tina Games, one panorama point. And first of all, this is a little difficult, because I'm a school committee member, and I applaud this wonderful work that our kids have done. So I just wanna applaud that. However, I work with the Cape Organization for Rights of the Disabled, and I brought with me a letter tonight from our executive director, and she published this about a year ago. This particular article is not ADA compliant. It's absent of reasonable accommodations for those with disabilities. There are some people in our community that need straws in order to feed, and while metal and paper sounds like that might work, they need to be bendable, and we can only do that with plastic. So what I'm asking for with this particular article is to have some form of accommodation. I think it's a great article. I'd love that the kids put all the research into it, but I, I am concerned about that. So I'm going to make a motion. I'd like to, can I do that?
We'll see what it is.
Okay, so my, so my amendment would be that if this, if we want to accept this, to make room for accommodations with those with disabilities, which would, for restaurants that if, that you provide someone who's asking for a plastic bendable straw, to provide that.
Can you, uh...
Word that better.
Can you pen me some language? I assume it's under 122-93, the Use Regulations. Maybe you could start the sentence there with something to the effect that "accept is necessary to accommodate a disabled individual. Plastic straws shall not."
Yeah, "Plastic straws shall not be used, dispensed, or sold by any food establishments or any retail establishment within the town of Harwich." Uh, blah, blah, blah. Yes, I would say, "Plastic straws shall not be used unless in the case of a request for reasonable accommodation, as per the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act." ADA, it has to be ADA compliant, so, did that help?
If you wanna write it down and bring it up, we'll, we'll...
Can I come up there?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
It's very difficult writing town bylaws on town meeting floor for all of you folks to try and keep track of. Yeah, why don't you just slash in what you'd like to say up there? It's fine. Yep, sounds fine. So what have we got? Or sold. Unless a reasonable, of comedy, for people with disabilities. Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna read that. You can go back to where you were and, yeah. So we're dealing with two issues at the moment. The first is that I'm advised that the person who made the motion, Mr. Matheson, while a resident and a voter, did not check in, didn't have his purple card. That's being corrected. He's going down and registering now with his purple card, so his motion will be in order, but that's being taken care of. That was brought to our attention by somebody on the floor, and we're taking care of that. But he is registered voter, and he's being signed in right now. Secondly, the speaker has proposed an amendment to the proposed bylaw. It's under Section 122-9-3. In the first sentence, which says, "Plastic straws shall not be used, dispensed, or sold by any food establishment or any retail establishment within the town of Harwich on or after January 1st, 2020." The proposed amendment is to slash in after the word "sold," unless a reasonable accommodation for people with disabilities is made. So that phrase would go in at that spot. That's her proposed amendment. I find it is within the scope of the proposed bylaw. Does anyone choose to second it? It's been seconded. So, debate on it? I think you've already explained it.
Yep.
Any further debate on this amendment? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, hi, Sally Mahoney, Birch Drive. I was on the Harwich Disability Rights Committee before the ADA was enacted by President Bush. And now that it has been in place for many years, it, I believe, although the lawyer might wanna check, that the ADA is a federal law that would trump, pardon the expression, anything else that we do at this meeting, so that a person with a disability doesn't need this phrase. They have every right to use whatever straw they want. I believe that that's the case. Thank you.
So, the question to Town Council, it's one of federal preemption of state law. We can get a little education here. Whether the ADA statutes would preempt this local ordinance anyway, thereby obviating the need for the bylaw. And I'm hoping to hear the answer. The amendment to the bylaw.
Oh, the amendment. It wouldn't preempt the entire bylaw.
Right.
I'm sorry, Amy Quessell, Town Council. It would make the, it would make the amendment unnecessary, because, yes, it would preempt.
So with that opinion, ma'am, would you like to withdraw your amendment?
Uh, yeah, well, I will. The only problem I have with it is you've got a first offense, a hundred-dollar second, so what you're saying is if somebody is drinking from a plastic straw, they're not gonna get fined a hundred, because you've got some heavy offenses in here.
No, no, wait a minute. That's a different issue.
Okay, all right.
All right? Let's deal with your issue. You've proposed an amendment.
Yes.
Just had an opinion from council that she believes that the federal ADA statute would preempt this local bylaw, thereby obviating the need for your amendment.
Okay, then I withdraw it, based on what she said.
Okay. So the, the amendment, and whoever seconded, would you withdraw your second? Okay, Mr. Scannell did. So the amendment's now off the floor. So we're now back to the main motion, which was to accept and adopt as printed. And you had a further comment?
Uh, well, my other, my further comment, but I guess if we're withdrawing, is the offense, my question would be to the petitioners, so if somebody, so ADA, they come in there, they drink, they're drinking, so that...
No, it doesn't apply to ADA.
All right, all right.
That's the federal preemption rule.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? This woman over here.
Noel Donovan. Can we please move the question?
Uh, is that a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, we have a motion to terminate debate on Article 53. Before we do that, I wanna make sure that the gentleman who made the motion was registered.
He's not a registered voter.
We've got a further problem. So the gentleman who made the motion is not a registered voter. So, the motion is not properly on the floor. So we're now unwind, all the way back to, we just have Article 53 on the floor with no motion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator.
What is that? Are you making a...
Mr. Moderator, may I make the motion in...
Are you a registered voter?
Yes, Bernadette Waystack.
Do you have your purple card? Can you show me your...
Bernadette Waystack, Precinct 2.
All right.
May I make the motion on behalf of my colleague?
And what is your name?
Bernadette Waystack.
Bernadette Waystack, okay, Bernadette. And the motion you wanna make is the article be accepted and adopted as printed?
Yes, please.
Okay. So that motion's now on the floor. Now we have the motion to terminate debate, which is non-debatable, and requires a three-fourths majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 53, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I'm gonna take it one more time. Otherwise, I'll have to take a standing count. All those in favor of terminating debate, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
All right, I'll take a standing count. What's that? No, I can't. Because I don't know how many yes votes there are. So, but maybe we'll do that, and then we'll see how many yeses we need. So we're gonna do this in reverse. I'm gonna take the no votes first.
Aye.
So, all those in opposition to terminating debate, rise and be counted. Looks like we have one. Okay, do I have at least five in favor of the motion? I do, so we do have a three-quarters count, so we're gonna move now to a vote on the So the motion before you on Article 53 is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Motion carries. We're now in Article 54. This is amending Board of Health regulations to restrict the sale of flavored tobacco. Do I have a positive motion on this article? We do not. Does anyone wish to make a positive motion on this article? Mr. Weiser, you do?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to point out the time of the day.
Yeah, I intend to keep going tonight to see if we can finish this warrant, Mr. Weiser. So...
In comments, motion, Mike.
I recognize Mr. Brown for the purpose of making a motion.
I move this article be definitely indefinitely postponed.
Said move and second that Article 54 be indefinitely postponed. Is there any debate?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The article's indefinitely postponed. Article 55. See if the town will vote to require the individual voting records of selectmen and finance committee members as recorded in the minutes of relevant meetings be included in the warrant with any article before town meeting for a vote at any annual or special town meeting and to act fully thereon. Do I have a positive motion?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted with the following change: replace the words "individual voting records" with "total voting records."
So there is a positive motion on Article 55. It's that the article be accepted and adopted with the following change: replace the words "individual voting records" with "total voting records." Mr. Sutcliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the petitioner, this change would totally obviate any usefulness of the article. My intention is to put the names of those on the committees, and I don't want to sound like I'm grousing about the committees that put lots of time in. However, I'm frustrated that I never get a clear sense of what the minority opinion is. My hope is that by putting, publishing the names of those participating in the votes at the time the minutes are recorded, it will engender more discussion about critical, the critical parts of making the vote. I've seen typically that there has been no cost analysis, cost benefit analysis as a rule done by the finance committee, which I've found frustrating. And I also see that a lot of the votes by the selectmen are 6-0, 5-0. I mean, the point is, there's, there's no ability to engage in what was critically discussed prior to coming to town meeting.
So, are you looking to amend this motion?
No.
Okay, you're leaving this motion alone?
Correct.
Okay. Any further debate on the motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion that's before you is that the article be accepted and adopted with a change: replace the word "individual voting records" with "total voting records." All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
It does not carry. Article 56. See if the town will vote... I'm sorry? It's not an amendment, that's a main motion. No amendment was made, sir. No, he made a main motion that was different than the article. That's why I read it and repeated it. This is not an amendment, this is a main motion.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Al Melance, West Harwich. I just need to get clarification. Oh, I thought I talked loud enough for all you. You wanted to change the wording, require the individual voting records to total.
Exactly, and that was a main motion. He made that as a main motion. I asked Mr. Sutcliffe if he wanted to amend it, he said no. I asked him if he wanted an amendment, he said no. I asked him twice.
You asked him if, he said it totally changes the sponsorship of the thing.
I appreciate that, sir. And after he said that, I said, "Mr. Sutcliffe, do you want to make an amendment?" He says, "No, I want to leave it alone."
Sorry?
So the article is done. We're onto Article 56.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll resubmit it next year.
Article 56.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Hello? Can we make a motion for the original language?
No, we can't. You can, you can break a motion to reconsider the article if you'd like. That's in order.
I would like to make a motion. My name's Sandy McClardy, resident East Harwich. And I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the original language.
You'd like to make a motion to reconsider the action taken under Article 55?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Any second, anybody second it?
Seconded.
Okay, that requires a three-fourths majority to pass. It's debatable. Anybody want to debate it? Doesn't look like it. All those in favor of reconsidering the action taken under Article 55, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
See, I can't call a three-quarters vote without taking a standing count. I'm gonna try it one more time, see if we can get a unanimous vote. All those in favor of reconsideration of Article 55, so indicates by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. We're now back to Article 55. Mr. Sutcliffe, do you want to make a main motion to simply accept and adopt as printed?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I do.
Okay. So we now have a main motion on the floor. Do I hear a second to that?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody want to debate that motion? Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very quickly, this does not require the accumulation of any new information. Every vote we take is a matter of record in our minutes that we vote on. The only thing that's missing is, you don't know what those are when you come in and just get a warrant. So, I'm comfortable with knowing how everybody voted on the Board of Selectmen, and me particularly. I'm sure we all are comfortable with that. This is fine.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote, Mr. Moderator. Mr. DeCosta?
The only objection the finance committee really has is, we do put our information in there as a total package, but we make a lot of changes, and some of them will come after the warrant is printed. So you're gonna see nine names printed, those in favor, those against, and then later we'll change our mind, and there'll be seven names, because two people were missing, and it's gonna get confusing, and it's gonna get hard for us to track, and you'll be asking questions about people that voted against it, because your warrant tells them they voted against it, and it won't really be the case. New information comes along, and we change our minds. That happens a lot in this business. It happens a lot in the process of how we govern by committee. We just ask you to keep that in mind. It's a lot more work for people who volunteer for nothing.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion on Article 55 is accept and adopt as printed. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The article carries.
Thank you.
Article 56. See if the town will vote to propose the following amendment to the Harwich Home Rule Charter to be approved by the voters at the next annual town election as follows. It's amend Chapter 3, Section 11. Board of Selectmen of five members shall be elected at large for three-year overlapping terms, and then here's the amendment: For the purposes of this charter, the Board of Selectmen shall be referred to as the Select Board. And further, by deleting in every other instance in which they appear the words "Board of Selectmen" and inserting in place the words "Select Board," and to act fully thereon. Do I have a positive motion?
I think so. I move that this article be accepted and adopted to refer this request to the bylaw Charter Review Committee, and further, to ask the bylaw Charter Review Committee to report with their recommendations and/or proposal to the next annual town meeting.
Yeah, if I have a motion of somebody who wants to move the article, I'll take that. Before that one.
That would be me.
Mrs. Sebula?
As one of the petitioners, I move that Article 56 be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Can I have that? I've got one. I'll put your name on it. You're recognized for the purpose of debate.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. DeCosta, but I really wanted to get this without the weaseling. In 1776, I think we all remember that, and they date, when the citizens of this country decided to rebel. Well, this is one of those times. This topic has been talked about, it's been brought up, and it's always been a, well, we'll think about it, we'll look into it. So, I'm, the petitioners are fine, all charter changes go to the ballot next year, we're fine with that. Some of the comments that I've heard about this are that there would be a problem with the Commonwealth and mass general law. There isn't. There's no regulatory change to the duties, responsibilities, authorities, anything that this elected board would have under the Commonwealth law and under our charter. It is simply a name change. There have been 80 communities within this Commonwealth that have done this. There has been no pushback from the state. I've heard comments about costs. I think we all know that pre-printed letterhead went the way of the blue suede shoes. I checked with the town administrator's office, and they use a template on a Word document, so to change it is a few keystrokes. Also, the Board of Selectmen names on that change every year with elections. I think my last comments are about, I've heard, tradition. And that's really the source of anybody who has, who has opposition. Tradition can be many things. And tradition has changed, as we have changed as a society and as a people. We have some traditions that continue, like placing flags on the graves of our veterans, Easter egg hunts, naming children after grandparents, Thanksgiving dinner with friends and family, and don't forget those 4th of July barbecues with 4th of July, with our friends and family. Even trick-or-treating has changed, where we don't trick-or-treat in the neighborhoods anymore, we come to the community center. I think there are traditions that have changed as we have grown as a society. Things like not allowing women to obtain jobs, or vote, or manage their money. Things like interracial marriage, same-sex marriage. Some things change as society changes. Our children, as we talk to them, we use words like equality, fair play, equal treatment, and gender equity, particularly in our school systems. We should show our youth that not only can we lead into the future, but we can follow them as we change our words. Please vote for this article, and let our children see that this town endorses gender equity not only in deed, but in word. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 56? It's accept and adopt as printed. Looks like you're ready for a vote. Are you rising? Mrs. Hall?
Charter bylaw review committee has no comment to make regarding the merits of the article, separate and aside. However, this is not the way you make a charter change. There are always other things to consider. We had an article in here tonight that we thought was perfectly fine the way it sat, and then on Friday, discovered a conflict. This should have come before Charter bylaw review, and been presented. It never was. We never got it. I don't know who, over the years, has been asked about this issue, but I know it wasn't us. I would ask if, even if you support the concept that you follow the finance committee's advice and refer it back so that we can come back with it next year, understanding all the ramifications that might be sprinkled through the charter, through our bylaws, what have you. Thank you.
Any further debate? Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you. The only other things that we bring up is, in some sentences, it refers to the Office of Selectmen instead of the Board of Selectmen. So this would change the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, and in the same sentence, from the Office of Selectmen. So you'd have the two words in the same sentence. And also, this does not address any of our bylaws. If we refer to the bylaw and Charter Review Committee, what I said from the very beginning, we just want a nice thorough looking at everything to make sure it all fits. We don't mind that it's come before us, we just want to make sure that it's done right. So they would look at both the bylaws and the charter to make the corrections. Right now, you would have a full set of bylaws, go read them, that all say Board of Selectmen, and a charter that says Select Board. It just didn't seem to make sense to us, so we just asked for this separation to get it done right.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am?
Sally Mahoney, I say I'm in support of this as written. My comments are fireman, firefighter, policeman, police officer, stewardess, flight attendant.
Any further debate? Mrs. Sebula?
To you, Mr. Moderator, just a comment. I believe that this topic was on at least two agendas of the bylaw Charter Review Committee, so they have had an opportunity to at least discuss it.
A quick word, it's because we were aware of the article, but we've had no chance to look at the whole entirety of what this does to the bylaws, to the charter, whether there's a conflict. Yes, we put it on our own agenda because we were aware of it. Our decision was that we would like to see this referred to us so we can do it the right way. That's all.
Any further debate? Okay, this is a proposed charter amendment, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion, which is to accept and adopt as printed, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I'm gonna take it one more time. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule it did not get the necessary two-thirds majority. We'll now move to Article 57. Now, I know we're at 11 o'clock, we're beyond the time we usually go, but it looks to me like there's a lot of people still here who came here for the next several articles. So, if I'm reading you correctly, I'm willing to go, let's see if we can get it done, you're all here, rather than come back another night. The only thing I ask is, if we get through the next three or four articles, there's about another half a dozen after that, I need you to stay and help me get those done. I can't have nobody here when that happens. So, with that commitment, let's go to Article 57. Finance Committee, no positive motion, right? Okay, so I'm going to Mr. Birch. Is he still here? There he is, behind me. And he's gonna make a motion, a positive motion.
I move to transfer the care, custody, control, and management of the 2.24 acre, more or less, parcel of land located at 276 Queen Anne Road, shown on Assessors Map 69 as parcel M1, and being portion of the premises acquired by the town pursuant to order of taking, recorded with the Barnstow Registry of Deeds and Book 11666, pages 103-105, from the cemetery commission currently held for the purpose of a pet crematory and pet burial ground to the Board of Selectmen to be held for general municipal purposes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. So the motions were made and seconded. Debate, Mr. Birch?
Good evening, thanks for all hanging in here. It's been a long night, a lot of good things have been discussed. I'm a full-time resident of the town of Harwich since 1979. I own two properties on Queen Anne Road. To say the least, this project has never been handled properly from the day it came to begin. In my belief, and many others in this town, there's no need for a pet cemetery for the town of Harwich. This project is a solution looking for a problem. As we sit here in the town meeting, we see that there are real problems and real needs that must be addressed by all of us. I don't believe this is one of those needs. It might be a want, but it's not a need. I'm not a politician, nor would I want to be one. I could give you many, many reasons why this is, has been a complete failure of a project. You've been educated through this whole process, you're educated people, I think you believe to make a very smart and educated taxpayers, and you needed to make a smart choice on this one. Do we really want to take this extremely valuable piece of property and turn it into expense that we need to carry on our overburdened tax shoulders? I encourage you to vote yes on this motion. Please stop this boondoggle, take back our land, take back our town, and power to the people. God bless all of you.
Okay, so, I'd ask you to hold your applause so we can kind of move through this, if you would, please, thank you. So debate, gentleman in the middle.
Yes, Brian Parity, 26 Echo Woods Road. Last night, I think the taxpayers sent a very clear message on this. We rejected by a vote of 333 to 168, this project. We rejected $131,000 in capital outlay. We do not want capital outlay on this project. $131,000 in capital outlay. We do not want capital outlay on this project. We do not want to donate 1. something million dollars' worth of land to this project, and we do not want to give up the potential annual tax revenue from a good alternative use of this project. It's time that we put this to bed. It's time that you listen to us, all of you, listen to us, and put this to bed. Let's transfer the land back to the Board of Selectment, and let's let them start figuring out a better financial benefit for this land than what a pet cemetery would bring. Thank you.
So before I get to Ms. Brown, Town Council has been asked to make a comment about this article.
Basically, under Chapter 40, Section 15A, because this land is being held for a particular purpose, it is being held, and it's being held by the Cemetery Commission, the Cemetery Commission has to vote, it's a majority vote of the commission, to make this surplus land. It doesn't have to be done before this vote, it can be done after this vote. But I did just want to make town meeting aware of the fact that even if you vote in favor of this tonight, it doesn't mean that the land will automatically be transferred back. The Cemetery Commission still has to make a vote, a majority vote, to call this surplus land.
Thank you. Did I have Ms. Brown over there, next?
My question was answered by the...
Okay, great. Woman in the middle.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Pamela Kendall, 86, Old Chatham Road.
Gotta speak right into that, Pamela.
How's that?
That's great.
I just kind of wanted to review a little bit of the history of the parcel of land that's in question. 1997, it is my belief that it was taken by eminent domain for a swap or a transfer of land for the sole purpose of municipal use or open space only. I believe there was a motion to sell it in 2006. The motion failed, but the majority, that's what the townspeople wanted. They didn't want it sold at that time. In 2016, the majority of the townspeople, as a matter of fact, it was 104, voted for this parcel of land to be transferred to the Cemetery Commission for the purpose, at that time, of a pet cemetery and crematory. The crematory has been taken off of this project. What I really am asking at this point is, if this particular article is to pass, are you saying that my vote in 2016, and the vote of 103 other people of this town, meant nothing? So does... I'm asking the moderator.
No, this particular article, as I understand it, and I certainly welcome the input of Town Council if necessary, is to unwind the vote that you participated in. In other words, town meeting, as a legislative body, has a right to reconsider the action taken under prior articles. Sometimes, because of the nature of those articles and commitments that have been made under those articles, they're unable to do that. In this particular case, it does not appear that there's a legal impediment, other than what council advised you about the Cemetery Commissioner's vote, to reconsidering the action taken under that article. Doesn't mean it didn't mean anything. What it means is, the legislative body has a right to unwind things in certain situations.
So if I'm to understand what you're saying, is the last two nights of voting, there are other articles in three years that they can come back and unwind as well?
Only articles, only certain types of articles can, not every article. This isn't reconsideration. This is to rescind an action previously taken. It's different than reconsideration. Reconsideration is something that has to be done on the same night as the action that you actually voted on. That's reconsidering, that's procedural. This is a rescission of a prior action of town meeting.
If this were to be rescinded, are you still held to using it for open space or municipal purposes only?
This proposes to transfer the jurisdiction control back to the Board of Selectment for general municipal purposes.
For general municipal purposes, correct?
Correct.
Not to be sold, correct?
There's no authorization for sale in this particular article. At some future point, the Selectmen may bring forward an article to seek authorization from the town meeting to sell it, but there's nothing in this article that is authorizing a sale.
Okay, so when I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting, when this was brought out, I believe I listened to the Town Council at that time. Not only is it just for the Cemetery Commission to transfer it back, but I believe he had said it was a three-step process. Was I incorrect in my thinking?
Well, I think the three-step process is probably this vote, and it needs a two-thirds vote.
Correct.
So if you get a two-thirds vote, then the Cemetery Commission has to vote, and if that happens, then there's probably a deed that would get recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So that's probably the third step. But maybe Mamie can fill us in on that.
So again, the Cemetery Commission does not have to relinquish it back to the Board of Selectmen.
They do.
They do.
The Cemetery Commission has to take a vote that this is surplus property.
Yes, has to take a vote, but if they choose not to give it back, they don't.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Did you want to answer that?
Just, I, another third step could be that if you're talking about having the Selectmen actually sell it, it then has to come back to town meeting.
Correct. Now, we do have other parcels that I'm aware of, that the town does own, that can actually be sold. Actually, one that I'm aware of is on Queen Anne. Is that correct?
There may be others, where there's already an authorization to sell, I don't know.
But, okay, as far as I'm aware, and I'd just like the townspeople to also be aware, that there are other parcels that are, can be sold at this time. The other part I'd like to speak on, on the particular burial ground as well.
Okay.
That I do feel as though there is a need for it, a want for it. I was in the dog world for over sixteen years, showing, and training, and being involved with various clubs, also having, I currently have six German Shepherds waiting to go in. So I do know of a lot of people, maybe not all in the town of Harwich, but that may belong to Cape Cod Kennel Club and other dog clubs, that have a real need for this. They either live in a condominium, they rent, or they just want a place to lay their companion to a final resting place, and not have to worry about their remains if they move. The other part about it is, is I do feel that this would be a benefit to the Barnstable County Sheriff's K-9 Department, and allow officer, K-9 officers to have a place that's somewhat local to come visit the officers and other dogs that have serviced our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? Yes, ma'am.
Kind of nervous to get back up here after my last loss of control.
You seem in a complete composure right now.
I am composed. I believe there is a need for a pet cemetery, and I speak as a lawbreaker. I don't know if you realize that it's against the law in this town to bury your dog on your own property. And when I went to take my little five-pound poodle who had developed serious dementia, and it was coming apart in all possible directions, to be put to sleep, as it, the euphemism has it, I asked the vet whether indeed it was against the law for me to bury her on our land, and he said, yes, it is. But if you bury her four feet down, probably no one will bother you. So my husband, bless his heart, dug a four-foot grave for our little five-pound dog, and she is now lying in our upper garden, under a fierce bear who protects her, and a series of flowers, and I go and visit her regularly. I have two other dogs, but she was special, and I love to have a place for her. But I know she's there illegally. Now, I have a large piece of property, and I've given away where you could find her if you looked. But otherwise, you'd have a tough time figuring where that dog was buried illegally. But the fact of the matter is, there are lots of people who don't have land to bury their animals, and there are lots of people, probably in Harwich, not just to mention the Cape and elsewhere, for whom their dog or cat is their closest family member. They have no other family that they care about, or that care about them. If you don't present a possibility for a burial center for dogs, you're gonna have a lot of little bodies that are going to be needed to be dealt with, and very often by little old ladies, because we live a long time, we women, who are gonna be having a tough time finding what they're gonna do with it. Not gonna want to throw their cat in the trash. They don't want to take their dog out and dump it in the dumpster. They want to have a place where they can come and say, you know, Button, I still love you. It's been a while, but I still love you, and I'm glad you're close at hand. So although people, there's been a lot of fur flying about this one, sorry, but it seems to me that talking about how expensive it is, which I'm not sure is all that expensive, and to say, we don't need such a thing, well, maybe you don't need it, but maybe your mother does, and maybe your aunt does, and maybe all those people who live in Heatherwood, or, you know, what are the ones in Harwich, where people are allowed to keep a dog, but they're not, you know, once the dog dies, they have to figure out what to do with them. Please think about that. Think about the human emotional side of losing a pet who is like a child to you. And don't just dismiss that as an irrelevancy, and that if it costs some money to deal with that, and I'm hoping that can be arranged by the arrangements for a pet cemetery, that you don't forget that when you're making decisions on these articles.
Any further debate?
Yes.
You've already spoken once, sir.
Right.
I'm getting somebody new. Go ahead.
Jane Ryder, from East Harwich. I have pets, and they're wonderful. But I think we need to look back, are we dealing with pets or humans in this town, regarding the young people that are still trying to get homes? They don't have enough money, number one. Some of these same people which settle these towns, the fishermen, the lobstermen, just service people, are being complained about because they have their equipment, their lobster pots, et cetera, and their yards. This would be property, it was returned back to the town, that they could maybe rent some space from, because that's another issue. The third thing I say is, I think that it's hard for me to understand that we just seem to be still ignoring the fact that our young families, whose families have been here for generations, have to leave. That would be an increase in taxes and a waste of good land. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg?
Rosenberg. There was an article in the Cape Cod Chronicle, actually a letter, that talked about people that like to entertain their hobbies, and therefore they're using something which could have been a big financial boom for the town by having the cultural center not become residence. Yeah, okay, I get that, but there are a lot of hot people there, and it's good use by those folks. So similarly, I think that one has to consider the issue at hand. Now, as I drove over to the area along Queen Anne, I saw some of these green signs. You know, you see these green signs all around town. They say, "Support Harwich Pet Burial Area." And yes, there are people for that, that may not be here tonight that are speaking. But what impressed me was that three property owners, as you get close to that cemetery area, three property owners have that green sign up. They know something. I think maybe they think that it looks like open space. Sure, it wouldn't look like open space if you did something. But on the other hand, I get it. It's the money, honey.
In the middle, this woman here?
Ann Stewart, Pleasant Lake. I just want to bring out, I want to find out and determine for certain. I believe that the only bodies, the only parts of your pet that can go in this burial ground is ashes. I think there may be a misconception that people are actually taking their pets and putting them in coffins, whatever, and burying them. Is that perfectly clear? Is it ashes only? Could we determine that?
I don't know that. Does anybody know that? Robin Kelly, Cemetery Commissioner?
Yeah, they're for cremated remains only.
Okay.
Okay, it's good that everybody understands that. There's no burials.
Yeah, okay. This gentleman here?
Joe Burns, North Harwich, and I am a pet owner, and I have a great deal of sympathy for the people who have grown close to their pets. But it's private matter. It's a personal matter. It's not a public matter. I have a couple of questions and a couple of issues on this. One, we talk about, you can put pets in there, you put their ashes in there. How many pets are gonna fit in there? And what happens when that's filled up?
So with the...
Is that the end of it?
Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, Robin Kelly.
How many can go in?
So there is, at the current layout of the property, there's 10,550 lots. That actually has five feet of green space in between each row. So in the future, the green space could be developed after that. The 10,550 lots, if we sold, they're $100 apiece, would take in over $1 million in revenue if we sold just to Harwich residents. If we sold to outer towners, it would take in over $2 million.
Okay, so you got a lot of room. Now, the property use, people brought up, is this the best property use? I don't know. I'm concerned about affordable housing, like everybody else is. I'm concerned about people who can't afford to live where they work. Would they be benefiting more from this than a pet cemetery? But most of all, I'm concerned with, why are we paying for this? Why are we paying for this private venture, or which should be a private venture? There are people here who are living on fixed income. There are people here living on social security. There are people here who are out of work. There are people here who are unemployed, and there are people here who are struggling to pay their property taxes. And so it would seem to me you have to make the best use of the property taxes, and I don't see having a pet cemetery to satisfy people who develop a close relationship with their pet as the best use of their money. I have with me some bills that I have, $340 I had to pay for my cat to get his physical. I've got $89 to my 15-year-old cat to pay for his special medicine and food. I'm not asking anybody to pay for that. So why am I being asked to pay for somebody's burial of a dead cat?
Can I answer?
Okay, so that's not a question. Mr. Conroy, you're next.
Yes, thank you. Sometimes I think we've lost our mind. So this is symbolic of why we have lost our way over the last few years, and our budget has grown by 40%, all right, in the last five years, I believe, six years. We've got to prioritize better. We've got to define the function of government. This is a private sector business. When we lost our two dogs over the last few years, we had them cremated, they put them in urns, we put their little pictures on them, and yes, I still love my dogs, okay? But this is not a function of town government. We should not be in businesses that the private sector handles very efficiently. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I answer the question about it being, so the, it's being paid...
Ms. Kelly, wait just one second. I recognize this woman over here, and then you're next.
Karen Smith, East Harwich. I too have been in dogs forever. I too just ran home last night from New Jersey at a dog show to get here, to make sure I was here to say, we do not need to be in this business. Dogs, cats, whatever, horses, I love that one, people are gonna pay to get their horses cremated, and then pay another $250 to $500 to have it buried in this piece of property? First of all, euthanizing an animal, whether it's a cat, dog, or horse, is going to cost you in the upper hundreds. $200 at least for a dog. It's not cheap to do a horse. Now you're asking somebody on a fixed income to not only euthanize, and then cremate. My 30-pound dog to cremate four years ago was $300. You're already up to $500, and you're telling me that people on fixed incomes are gonna pay an additional $250 to go and burial? to pay an additional $250 to go and burial so they can walk around with a highway department, I mean, a highway behind them, and a highway department in front of them and say it's pristine, and this is where I want to walk my dogs to encourage other, to see my old dog? Sorry. I am not for this. I have lived and breathed dogs, a lot of people, you guys know me, I still, I'm in dogs four days a week, I teach. This is ridiculous. We need to get out of this. This is a private sector, not town.
Okay, Ms. Kelly, you're next.
So the project is being paid by the lot owners, not by your tax dollars. And the money that comes in...
Just, please, just let her talk. She has the floor.
And the money that comes in will be paying back the initial payment that we initially spent, so you'll be getting back $70,000. If this does not pass, you will not be getting back that $70,000, and we only need 60 to finish the project.
Gentlemen in the middle?
Yes, well, timely. With all due respect to Ms. Kelly, she touts a $1 million revenue figure if only Harwich lots are sold, a $2 million revenue figure if other lots are sold. Benchmarks. You may not know, but we have a private cemetery in Sandwich, it's called Animal Inn. Benchmarking that, they sold 400 plots in 40 years. That's 10 plots a year. And I'll give her $150, I'll pay you $150 a plot. That's $1,500 in revenue per year. 87 years to pay back the 131,000 you're talking about, 666 years to recover our $1 million land investment. Higher benchmark, Pine Ridge Cemetery, Dedham, just outside of Boston, 17,000 plots sold in 111 years. That's 153 plots a year. Norfolk County, that's where they are, population 700,322 in 2017. Barnstable County, population 213,444 in 2017. That's 31% of the population of Norfolk. So if I take that 153 plot average that Dedham averaged, and apply a 31%, I get 48 plots a year. So maybe we're somewhere between 10 plots a year and 48 plots a year. With 48 plots a year at $150, we get $7,200 in revenue. 19 years to pay back the 131, and 138 years to recover a $1 million land investment. So pie in the sky, I can stand here and say, revenue million, but there's nothing, there's been no financial analysis by these guys at all, or these guys. This is ridiculous. We need to return this land back to the Board of Selectmen and get a financial deal in place that's going to benefit us as taxpayers. We need to stop this, we need to make the choices that are good, and we need to move on and put this to bed. Thank you.
Gentlemen over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Alan Lanson, West Harwich. I am against the pet cemetery for reasons that have already been stated. I've been a pet owner for many years. I think we sent a clear message last night to Link Hooper when we said no to 4 million plus. That's a need, that road will deteriorate eventually, we'll be back to that. This, I am sorry, is a want. And our Select Board member, Mr. McCaskill, said it's time to pump the brakes. I urge you all to start pumping the brakes and vote no on this. Thank you. A vote yes to get it back? You know what I'm talking about.
Mr. Howell, did you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Several things, because it was brought up that this property had been brought up for sale before. It wasn't that there was no buyer, I was the Chair of the Board that offered that, and Mr. Kakounis made a very cogent argument against it because it was linked to a vehicle acquisition fund, and Leo was able to blow that out of the water in three minutes. All he said was, you're taking something that's permanent, and you're converting it into something that wears out. So that carried the day, we didn't sell it. In the past, we've set aside property, but there's a process for building something on that, and yet, here we are. You would have to bury 874 remains to make back the $131,000 at 150 bucks a pop. 874. Now, unfortunately, and I'm going to say this now, because there's going to be a motion later, whatever you do with this article, you are not going to be seeing this built with revolving funds, because there's no revolving fund. It's going to be built first, and then they're going to allow it to be put on an installment plan, where essentially you're paying it off like a credit card with future burials. We have seen no realistic business plan that has any expenses for actually operating this. Apparently, it's going to be a leisure activity for the cemetery administrator when she's not doing the cemetery. I've had 22 animals, and mine are all in the Howell Memorial Pet Gardens behind my house. This is a prime piece of property, whatever you do with the jurisdiction, as soon as the first animals' remains get put in, you're never going to be able to reconsider this again. This is something that has to be cut short, you need to be able to say, no more, we don't want this to be done, because you never got the second part of the answer anyway. You set aside the land, do you remember actually approving building anything? I leave you with that thought.
This gentleman over here?
Mark Leach, 879 Orleans Road. I move we call the question.
Okay. So motions are made to terminate debate. Do I hear a second? Okay. It's non-debatable, requires a three-fourth majority to pass. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 57, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So here's the motion before you on Article 57. Let me read it to you again. I move to transfer the care, custody, control, and management of the 2.24-acre, more or less parcel of land located at 276 Queen Anne Road, shown on Assessors Map 69 as parcel M1, and being a portion of the premises acquired by the town pursuant to the order of taking recorded with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds in Book 11666, pages 103 to 105, from the Cemetery Commission currently held for the purpose of pet crematory and pet burial ground to the Board of Selectmen to be held for general municipal purposes. This requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I rule that it got the necessary two-thirds vote. Now, I'd ask you, we've got some more articles here, so let's see if we can move right through them. Article 58. See if the town will vote to amend the department revolving funds by adding a new revolving fund to be known as the Harwich Pet Memorial Gardens and Walking Park Fund as set forth as follows. And then it sets it forth, and it's for maintenance improvements, care, and support of pet burial ground to the pet burial ground. Do I have a positive motion?
No.
No. Does anybody want to make a positive motion? If not, I'll recognize the Finance Committee for the purposes of making a motion to indefinitely postpone.
I move that we indefinitely postpone this article.
Excuse me? If there's no positive motion, if nobody wants to accept and adopt this article, if there is somebody, that's why I ask, come forward.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we accept and adopt this motion.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. So there is a motion to accept and adopt Article 58 as it's printed. Is there any debate? Ms. Brown?
I have a question for administration. If this article does not pass, where will the $70,000 come from to replace what has been spent from the cemetery revolving fund?
Mr. Clark?
The $70,000 was transferred last year, so there would be no reimbursement, so essentially the taxpayers would have paid for that $70,000 that was reimbursed last year.
Doesn't the human, the cemetery fund that exists now, revolving fund, have to be reimbursed? Or did it already get reimbursed from free cash?
That was reimbursed through free cash.
So essentially, the taxpayers have already paid this back, and because the last amendment was defeated, we will never, the taxpayers did pay for the pet burial grounds, everything that's happened already, essentially.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any further debate?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Robert Berman, Schooner Drive. Giving them money, giving revolving money to the Cemetery Commission, which operated illegally in the first place, is like putting a hungry dog in a butcher shop.
Any further debate? Yes, sir.
Is it me?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Moderator, I guess I'm struggling with the notion that the taxpayers should pay for this. I think this money should come out of the Cemetery Department in some fashion, I don't know how they do that. But, you know, clearly this thing was mismanaged from the very, very beginning. Started construction when they shouldn't have started construction, spent money they shouldn't have spent, failed to present a comprehensive plan, a financial plan, the viability of this particular project, and, you know, representing, because I've got one of the pictures of this particular facility down in Florida, which is privately held, and then, you know, now you're saying, well, we moved the money around. I think that there should be a motion, if there's such a vehicle, to ask the Cemetery Department to actually pay this back, because it was directed by the Cemetery Administrator, and she drove this...
The scope of this article is whether or not we're going to create a revolving fund, not whether we're going to appropriate some money from the Cemetery Department to pay anything back. So I'd ask you, I'd ask you, it's late, I'd ask you to focus on this article. This is whether or not we create a revolving fund for the Pet Memorial Gardens. Further debate? Mr. Setfin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question is, just what is Article 58 doing here if we have voted down 57? I don't understand the logic.
There's a motion, and you can vote against it.
I'm going to make, I'd like to make a motion to defeat this article.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor to accept and adopt. All you have to do is vote no, if that's where you want to go.
Very good, thank you.
Any further debate on the motion that's on the floor?
Let me move the article.
Mr. Leach?
I move we call the question.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Because if there isn't, I don't even need to vote on that. I don't see anybody, so we're going to go right to the vote. The motion before you on Article 58 is the article be accepted and adopted as printed. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion does not carry, so we're on Article 59. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and to borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund the completion of the pet burial grounds, $60,720, and to reimburse the general fund $70,280 for the initial cost of preparing and improving the burial grounds. Funds contained within this appropriation ought to come from the sale of the pet burial lots and fees, and to act fully thereon. Do we have a positive motion? Any positive motion out there? You'll move a positive motion? Okay. So is your motion, it's Mr. Ryerson, right? Right. Is your positive motion to accept and adopt the article? Are you proposing to raise any money, or?
I want to make an article, we need a second.
Oh, you want an indefinite postponement? We're on Article 59.
I didn't have the mic. Go to the mic.
I'm sorry, can you just go to the mic, Mr. Ryerson, and then, nobody can hear you Okay, so here's, Mr. Ryerson, here's where we were. I typically go to the Finance Committee if they have a positive motion, they make it, they don't have any positive motion, they were ready to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article, and then you said you wanted to make a positive motion on it.
Right, I think we should vote on it as a town and defeat it, so I make a positive motion that we vote on it.
Okay, you can also defeat it by indefinitely postponing it if you want. Either way, it's your choice.
No, I'm going to make the positive motion, if we can have a second.
Second? And the positive motion is simply to accept and adopt with no money? Okay. Any debate? Mr. Kakounis?
I don't know what's going on, and I've been coming for, I've been coming to town meeting for near 40 years now, and I don't understand what's going on.
Well, you know what, Leo, I think you do.
Okay. A motion to indefinitely postpone is a no vote, and you vote yes for it. But I guess we shouldn't have a town meeting 101. I get it, thank you.
Okay. Any further debate? Okay, so the motion before you is to accept and adopt this article. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no.
No.
Motion does not carry. So now we're on Article 60. This is an easement for Verizon and Eversource Energy at the 1464 Orleans Harwich Road. Do I have a positive motion?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's a move and second of that Article 60, excuse me, be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote, and I move that it was, excuse me, I find that it was a unanimous vote. Article 61. I'm not going to read this in its entirety, this involves the potential transfer of a number of town-owned parcels from the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen or other boards or offices that have custody of tax title property to the Affordable Housing Trust of the parcels set forth in A, B, C, D, and E. Do we have a positive motion?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted with the following changes in Item C. The town impose a limitation on development on the southern portion of the parcel J3 in the area identified as falling under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Jurisdiction and the isolated wetlands, potentially vernal pools, as shown on map available at the town meeting, and excluding D, 728 Main Street.
Thank you. Do you have the map?
It's coming.
The map is going up?
It's coming.
Okay, so we have a motion on this article, it's accept and adopt and transfer all of the parcels with two exceptions. So follow along with me. Under small paragraph C, there's a large parcel J3 next to the last line under C, 17.34 acres. The motion says that the town impose a limitation on the development of the southern portion of parcel J3 in the area identified as falling under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Jurisdiction and the isolated wetlands, potentially vernal pools. I think that's going to be before you in a moment, hopefully. And then two, the motion strikes D, which is what's commonly known as the Albro House, 728 Main Street. That's stricken from the article by this main motion. So while we're waiting for that to come, oh, here it is. Okay. So I guess the southern portion of J3 is the area that's in dark brown and has a yellow line over it, and then the other area where there'd be no development is around the two vernal pools that are up towards the middle of the site. So J3 is the large parcel that's being transferred with that limitation on it, under this motion. Debate on the motion, Mr. Winston?
Yes. Greg Winston, Chairman of Mid-Cape Church Homes. Only reason I would like to thank Chris Clark for getting involved in this particularly, but I think it's an opportunity for me to stand here and let the people of town of Harwich maybe know a little bit more about what Mid-Cape Church Homes does.
Greg? This article is not about Mid-Cape Church Homes.
I just simply want to say...
And the hour is very late, so we're going to stick to the article.
I understand, I understand it's been stricken, and I appreciate that very much. The Albro House is an important part of the historic district of the town of Harwich, and I appreciate the fact that you have stricken it from the article, and I'm sad that anyone ever thought of putting it in. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, James Donovan, speaking as a representative for the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. The Real Estate and Open Space Committee would like to put forth the following amendment. For Article 61, Section C, that the town excludes development of Map 63 Parcel J3 extending from 100 feet north of the northernmost state classified vernal pool and isolated wetland extending south through the property to Map 63 Parcel J6. And I would like permission to show this on the screen. I believe the map is available.
Okay. Do you have that in writing?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we bring that forward? So-
In a try to maybe not have an amendment, this most likely is unnecessary because of the Wetland Protection Act. Is that, can I take a look at it?
We're going to see. We're going to see. So just give us a minute here.
So 100 feet north-
Of the northernmost state classified vernal pool.
So you're having it go 100 feet from the 100 feet?
All of this would be untouchable. So the only thing in J3 that they could develop is this little sliver up here. Doesn't say that.
Yeah.
Doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that.
Okay. So he wants the lines, can we get this map up?
Extending 100 feet north of the northernmost state classified vernal pool.
That's this line right here.
And that's what the, that's what the Wetland Protection Act protects. What is this, what is all this, what are these, what's this patch?
This is already untouchable under the main motion, so he's picking up the rest of this.
So you're essentially just picking up maybe this much, right?
Exactly. Because the main motion has these two and anything else.
Right. Okay, well, he has the right to make the motion.
Yeah, it's going to go, if he does.
Okay, so I'm sorry, this is a bit of a complicated amendment, but I think we can get you through it. Are we going to get that map up? Can we get the?
Not for that, because we wasn't anticipating.
They never posted that.
Okay, so the main motion, let me see if I can walk you through this. Can we get the map back up for the main motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Do you have a point of order? Because I've got an amendment that I'm going to announce that's going to be on the floor.
Okay, let me hear the amendment. I actually have some experience in this area, so I think I might be able to be helpful.
All right, well, we just got to get something on the, on the floor. Okay, so Mr. Donovan is proposing an amendment. You recall that the J3 parcel in sub-paragraph C, the 17.35 acre parcel, was proposed by the main motion to be restricted from development in the area that's brown and the area around the two vernal pools. Mr. Donovan has given me a motion that would restrict development in all of J3 up above, 100 feet above the two vernal pools. So where the number J3 is, that would also be restricted from development. So the entire piece up to 100 feet north of the northernmost vernal pool is where his amendment would draw their line of restriction for development on this piece. So that's the distinction between the main motion and the motion to amend. Is there somebody who wants to second this motion to amend by Mr. Donovan?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second. We'll now go to debate. I'm going to recognize Mr. Donovan first, because it's his amendment, I just want him to explain it. The hour is late, so let's be very specific and on point, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Real Estate and Open Space Committee supports the efforts of the Affordable Housing Trust and the majority of Article 61. Our goal with this amendment is to get clear language that will protect this ecologically sensitive parcel while still allowing for responsible housing development elsewhere on the, on this property and the adjacent properties. The reasons for this, all of this land is in a Zone 2 of contribution for multiple well fields, making its protection important for the integrity of our public water supply. This parcel is also a significant wildlife corridor between our town forest and the Thompson Field Conservation Area. And nearly the entire parcel is considered either priority or core habitat, critical to the protection of rare species by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. On behalf of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, I ask you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Any further debate on the amendment?
I don't think you have a meeting.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question. Aside from the fact that the trust's meetings were posted and we did have dealings with Real Estate and Open Space, when was the posted meeting you took this vote for you to be representing this position?
That was at our last meeting.
It was posted?
Was it posted that we were taking this position?
Yeah.
We voted.
You voted, and you have minutes for that?
Yes, yeah, I believe we do. We voted to take this position, yes.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. Any further debate on the motion to amend the main motion? Mr. Thompson?
No, I support this change. You know, we have to keep an eye on those vernal pools, because we're down below there drawing water.
All right, so you're in favor of the amendment?
I'm in favor.
Any other debate? Yes, sir.
Ken Farrakoff, 269 Depot Road. I live directly across from these vernal pools. There's a wealth of wildlife. I have turtles laying eggs in my front yard, spotted salamanders. All the natural stuff is all there. My kids skated on those vernal pools. There's water in those vernal pools year-round. They do not dry up. They're large, and it's just a ton of wildlife there. And I, with Mr. Howell before, we walked a lot of that property, because it was a lot of dirty titles back then, and trying to get the conservation to take it even 15 or 20 years ago. So I really recommend that we go with the amendment to cover past those vernal pools. I think that's critical for-
Any further debate on the amendment? Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a part of me that feels like this is a death by a thousand cuts. The problem here is, part of this is a red herring. We can't develop the vernal pools. There's a Wetlands Protection Act. This has to go through, anything that gets developed would have to go through all the regulatory processes. It would have to go through the planning board. It would have to go through the ZBA. Nobody's taking any shortcuts on this. The one problem with excluding this is, it doesn't allow for that calculation of land to be used for the development of the uplands that are developable. Everybody here lives near a nice wooded area. The question I posed to Ryos when they were in front of us was, is everything the same? Is every, is every property that has trees on it the same? There has been no comment by the Real Estate and Open Space Committee about moving this forward to make it open space. It's under the jurisdiction of Board of Selectmen currently, and it has been for years. Nothing is going to be developed on that vernal pool area, because it can't be developed into that area. Everybody keeps talking about how they're in favor of affordable housing, but I think they keep coming up with all the greatest ideas to make sure that we can't do it. The question that you have in front of you is, if we start excluding all these properties, we're not going to be able to build anything.
Any further debate on the amendment? I want to see if there's anybody new. Mrs. Kavanaugh.
I just want to point out in the discussion on limiting us on the lower portion is that that area can be used, you know, for mitigation, et cetera, but it also allows us to distribute the density in a better way that would suit the neighborhood. So in this amendment, you're limiting us and possibly increasing the density, if this parcel were even to be feasible for development for affordable housing. So in that regard, we normally hear the case that people want things to fit in their neighborhoods, and we'd be working hard to do that. So I ask you to consider that strongly. By limiting us, you're limiting what we can do to the best of the neighborhoods around you. Thank you.
Any further debate on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Waystack.
Richard Waystack, Howardport. Question through you, if I can, to Town Council. Does excluding this eliminate the mitigation, allowing for increased density in the Zone
Town Council.
I hate to give a lawyer answer, but development, it depends on what the mitigation would be. So, I hate, I hate to give you a lawyer's answer, but unfortunately, it says, excludes development, so it would actually depend on what the mitigation would be with the mitig-
Just case in point.
The degree of the mitigation.
Mr. Moderator, if I can?
Yes, Mr. Waystack.
Zone 2, 10,000 square feet per bedroom. To increase the density of the land upwards of the vernal pools, using that land down below, that 10,000 square feet per bedroom would be allowed. If this amendment goes through, does it eliminate that other land below, which is substantial? It's acres of land that would allow for additional bedrooms up above the vernal pools.
It wouldn't necessarily, however, there's no room up above, because you only have a ton-
The amendment is stretching 100 feet north of the northernmost vernal pool.
So you're only left with a sliver.
You're left with a little half-moon piece at the very top.
Does anyone know what that space is? Because if it doesn't, I think we need to discuss that. That's a big piece for affordable housing. I've heard over the last few nights, people talking about people, young people leaving the Cape. People can't afford to live in this community. We have no affordable housing. Each time we come back with affordable housing, there's another obstacle in the way. We have to stop. We're not going to have any young people here to vote at town meeting any longer.
Any further debate on the amendment? Yes, sir, and then I'll go to you, ma'am.
I don't have the specifics about this piece of property, but it's sounding to me like it's in an area which the Massachusetts Endangered Species Natural Heritage folks would define as priority habitat. Now, in order to develop in priority habitat, and it may be that there are trees that have moths living in them someplace in this area that we think is developable, but Natural Heritage views that as priority habitat, and you need to get permission from Natural Heritage in order to do any development. One of the things that they will accept as mitigation is if you put a permanent restriction on some other part of the property that's not already restricted. So if you build a restriction into this conveyance, then you're going to lose that bargaining chip when you go to Natural Heritage to try to develop that, because they're going to say, you need to give us something for our allowing you to disturb this moth habitat by building some affordable housing. So I agree with Mr. Howell that you've got the Wetlands Protection Act, you've got the Endangered Species Act, you've got plenty of state regulations that are going to prevent any real damage to be done here.
So let me interrupt you and see if I can ask Mr. Donahue a question. Mr. Donahue, your amendment seeks to exclude development of the entire parcel 100 feet north of the northernmost vernal pool. What if we added to the end of the amendment, however, nothing in the amendment shall prohibit that area, that restricted area, being used as mitigation to support development elsewhere on J3?
Yes.
Would you accept that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That, that was our intention.
Mr. Waystack, would you accept that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so why don't I write that up, once you come up here and you can change your amendment?
Everyone in this room can accept it. Natural Heritage is not going to accept it. I've been down this road with them.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
But don't put it into this vote because you're taking away a huge bargaining chip in terms of getting clearance from Natural Heritage to develop anything on this site. They're not going to be persuaded because it's affordable housing.
I'm familiar with Natural Heritage, so.
Okay.
I realize what it means to take, get a take letter or not get a take letter. Been down that road many times.
All right. But this statement that it's not in any way not available for mitigation, once they see a restriction, they don't view it as anything that's available to be traded in mitigation.
Okay. I appreciate you have your opinion. This is the motion to amend.
Okay.
If you want to vote against it, you can.
Well, I think everyone should vote against it.
So, any further debate on the motion to amend? This woman right here.
Hi, Clara McClarty, East Harwich. Just, not to waste time, but I absolutely hate to hear conservation pitted against affordable housing. Conservation and affordable housing are both pitted against Mick cottages and Eastward Companies and The Preserve and all of these enormous developments that bring in more demand for people to be cashiers, waitresses, laundromat workers, whatever, all of the services that they require. Affordable housing and conservation are together, and we don't need to take sensitive ecological places so we can put up apartments and shove a bunch of workers in them. We need an affordable community, which is different from affordable housing. If I could just say, since people are saying, "Oh, the young people, they're all worried about affordable housing," it doesn't mean we want apartment buildings on vernal pools.
Yes, sir.
I have one question. I'm Dave Callahan, Clearwater Drive, but also a member of Real Estate and Open Space. It's my understanding that this is being built, the affordable housing that would be placed here would be built under a 40B program, and that under that program, the size of the buffer zones around the vernal pools would be different. Am I correct in that regard? And if so, how big is the difference between what the state would not allow you to get into versus what the town regulations require as a buffer zone?
I mean, I'm not a 40B expert. I, you know, I'm not sure that this makes sense to try and do this on town meeting floor. I do know that under 40B, you can't cram down the state regulations.
That's right.
You can cram down the local regulations, but you can't cram down the state regulations.
That's why I'm asking the question.
I agree with the moderator. Exactly what he said. You cannot, you can waive local regulations, local bylaws, local regulations, local policies, but you cannot waive state regulations, statutes. So, this, 100 feet around a vernal pool is a state requirement.
That's a state, not just, that's not-
If it's a certified vernal pool, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can I make another clarification?
Yes, Mrs. Kavanaugh. We're still on the amendment. We haven't voted on it yet.
So, again, clarification. First of all, these parcels are for feasibility studies. So, there's no 40B going in here. There's no predetermined 40B going into this parcel. In addition, whatever the feasibility study shows on this parcel, if it is eligible for some type of housing, this amendment causing us to push up an additional 100 feet, so if you look at the vernal pools, there's already a setback of 100 feet. So, adding this amendment and another 100, now you've pushed us up 200 feet.
No, this is just 100 feet north of the most northern vernal pool.
Yeah, but from the vernal pool, correct?
From the vernal pool.
Right. So, we're going to have to push closer to the top of the parcel is the only point I want to make. So, A, there's no 40B, there's no predetermined. These are feasibility studies that will be conducted on these parcels. They're not determined to already be ready for housing. And what's happening is that if we, and the amendment addresses a mitigation factor, but we're being pushed further than we would like to be because we would like to address density in the best way to fit the neighborhoods if, in fact, this parcel were to be worthy of some housing. Just want to make that clarification.
Any further debate on the amendment? Something further, Mr. Waystack?
Just briefly, if, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I agree to the amendment change for the mitigation. However, if we do find out for whatever reason that it is not able to be utilized for mitigation, I would hope, in the spirit of compromise that we talked last week at the Affordable Housing Forum, is that we do bring this back next year to work out a compromise between our friends who are trying to preserve these areas and those of us who are passionate advocates for affordable housing in this community, that we can get something done.
Any further debate on the amendment? Looks like you're ready for a vote on the amendment. So, we had a main motion on Article 61. It was accept and adopt all of the parcels to be transferred to the housing trust, with the exception of two changes. The first was under C for J-3, and the language was that in the parcel J-3 and the area identified as falling under Mass Endangered Species jurisdiction and the isolated wetlands, potentially vernal pools, as shown on the map available at town meeting. So, that was the one that excluded the brown area and then the area right around the vernal pools. Left the middle of J-3 open and the upper part of J-3 open. The other thing the main motion did was to take out D, which is the Albro House. So, the amendment that we're going to vote on now changes the area of J-3. It restricts it further from not only the brown area, but also the middle of J-3, all the way up to 100 feet north of the northerly vernal pool, with the condition that the area that's being restricted could indeed be utilized for mitigation in support of the development in the remainder of J-3, the top, and in J-2 and in J-1. That's the language of the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment has read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The amendment carries. So, we now have a main motion on the floor with the Albro House still being deleted and J-3 being transferred, but subject to the conditions of the amendment. Any further debate on that?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Thompson.
The parcel Z-5 at the bottom of the article containing 1.11 acres, that's the recreation building on Sisson Road. Had we voted it sometime to do away with the wrecked building and build on that parking lot? That's what that is.
Question on E. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Moderator, the building stays. This just adds to the affordable housing on the parking lot, to the west of the parking lot.
So, that's more to Forest Street? Is that what you're doing?
Question is, how much of that parking lot? Mr. Thompson, just trying to figure out. You've got the recreational building there, you have a parking lot next to it. He's wondering where this piece is.
It's the land behind that heading south on Forest Street. And just for information for everybody, the town meeting actually had taken action, and there was a lease that was offered to HESH years ago. It didn't get developed because of the, HESH didn't finish it. It wasn't because there was any problem. They were supposed to coexist. The building's going to stay, the parking lot's going to stay, and the development would be behind.
Okay. I know where that is now. I was thinking the parking lot was going to go, and, no. Okay, I'm fine.
Okay. Any further debate on the main motion as amended? Hearing none, looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the main motion as amended, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The motion carries. So, now, we've got a couple of articles left here. The first one is transferring, I'm sorry, the next one is amending the general bylaw, Chapter 8, Departmental Revolving Funds, 8.1. Do I have a main motion on these revolving funds? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Ford. I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion on 62 is accept and adopt as printed. Any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd like to have an amendment.
To one of the funds?
Yes.
Which one?
To the cemetery fund. I see that inside the center of the paragraph is to amend the uses of the cemetery revolving fund. I would like to change its uses to just maintenance and care of town cemeteries, period.
Right now, it says maintenance, care, and support of town cemetery properties.
Correct. I want to amend that.
Okay. And what is your amendment?
My amendment is for the use of the fund to be maintenance and care of cemetery properties.
You want to take support out?
I do. I feel maintenance and care kind of covers everything.
Does anybody want to second that? Okay. All right, so we've, do you have that in writing, ma'am?
Yeah.
You do? If you want to bring it forward? Okay. Okay. And your name? Okay. Peggy Gabor, Ms. Gabor, has a motion that was seconded to amend the main motion. The main motion is accept and adopt as printed, and what she's looking to do is under number three cemetery by deleting and support so that it will read maintenance and care of town cemetery properties, deleting the support. Any debate on the amendment? Ms. Brown.
Yes, sir. If we eliminate the word support, then earlier when we passed the arboretum and software article, it would negate the use of that fund to pay for the software, the $7,000 per year. So, I would say no to this amendment.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready to vote on the amendment. We're just voting on the amendment, which would, oh, I'm sorry.
Carla Burke, Harwichport. I just have a question. When it says cemetery properties, are we talking just cemeteries, not the pet burial ground? Because that's under the care of the Cemetery Commission. So, can somebody let me know, does that mean cemetery, all the properties that are under the care of the Cemetery Commission?
It says town cemetery properties. That property would still be under the jurisdiction and control, I believe, of the Cemetery Department, unless and until they take a vote consistent with town meeting to release it.
So, if we vote for this, that means that the revolving, this revolving fund could be used for the maintenance and care of the property that was to be the pet, is the pet burial ground. Is that correct?
I thought I, excuse me.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, please.
Okay. Question on my amendment.
Yeah, the cemetery funds would have to be used for the cemeteries. Because the pet burial ground revolving account was voted down, there is no funding source to do any work on the pet burial ground.
So, any monies in this revolving fund cannot be used-
Correct.
-for the pet burial ground? Just cemeteries for human remains?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just clarification.
Any further debate on the amendment? Okay, it looks like you're ready for a vote. So, the amendment seeks to take out the word support under the use of the fund under cemetery. All those in favor of the amendment, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Amendment fails. We're back to the main motion, which is accept and adopt as printed. Any further debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 62, which is accept and adopt as printed, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 63.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I just want to offer my sincere apologies for earlier. It was never my intention to misrepresent myself to you or try to deceive you. I didn't take the appropriate steps that I felt that I had taken, and I just want to apologize for any of the confusion.
Apology accepted, no problem. Article 63. See if the town will vote to rescind the establishment of a capital infrastructure revitalization fund at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, which was established pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5F, originally established by a vote of the annual town meeting 2016 by Article 15. Mr. Brown.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's a move and second of Article 63 be accepted and adopted as printed. Any debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 63, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article 64. See if the town will vote to rescind Article 49 of the 2010 annual town meeting and transfer the unexpendable balance in said account into the golf pro shop lease revenue revolving account and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article to be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's a move and second of that Article 64 be accepted and adopted as printed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. The article is adopted. Article 65. Departmental Revolving Funds Authorization. Positive motion?
Yep. I moved that this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant with the following change, by removing the last fund, which is the pet burial ground, $140,000 available expenditure.
Okay, so, the motion under Article 65 is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant with one change, and that's to delete the pet burial ground, which is the last item on the chart there in your warrant. Debate on the article? Let's see. Did you want to make a motion to amend?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 65. Under the cemetery spending of $100,000, I would like to reduce it to $40,000. The justification is that in-
Oh, wait a minute. Before you go into debate, does anybody want to second that? Okay. So, we have a motion to amend the main motion to include one further change, and that's to amend the cemetery amount, spending limit, from $100,000 down to $40,000. Go ahead, Ms. Birch.
The justification is that in Article 62 that we just discussed, the cemetery requests going back to Article 51 at town meeting 2010 and revert back to the original narrative. Article 51 states, "In an amount not to exceed $40,000." I would like this amount enforced. This article was voted on and passed May 3, 2010.
Any further debate on the proposed amendment to the main motion? Mrs. Brown.
Mr. Moderator, there seems to be a vendetta against the Cemetery Department tonight. I think it's unfounded, regardless of what, what year was that?
2010.
2010. $40,000 in 2010 does not equal $40,000 today. And why is the Cemetery Department being singled out and not any of the others? I think this is ridiculous. Please vote no on this amendment.
Any further debate on the amendment? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Not on the amendment, no.
I think the Cemetery Commission has already lost all credibility they have based on what they have presented last year and also this year. The planning has been poor, the execution has been poor. It's a complete waste of the town's money, and it's a waste of our time tonight. Thank you. Mark Denon, Nine Mid Pine.
Thank you. Any further debate on the amendment?
Michael, can I?
Yes, Ms. Kelly.
So, the cemetery revolving account pays for a lot of different things. I pay for all of the trees to be sprayed for moths. We pay for repairs to irrigation. We pay for, you know, all different things from spraying for poison ivy. All of these things come out of that cemetery revolving account. So, your voting on is what, I used to get a $40,000 budget, and that was taken away from me in, I believe, 2006 or something. Since then, we started the cemetery revolving account. If I do not take in funds from sale of burial lots or doing ground penetrating renovation or fees, I don't have any money to spend. This is funds that the cemetery generates and that we put back into the cemeteries to make them beautiful for the people who purchase these lots. So, I think by reducing the amount of money that we're able to put back and make these cemeteries more beautiful, you're doing a disservice to the people who purchase these lots.
Any further debate on the amendment? Ms. Kakounis, and then I'll get you, Mrs. Kendall.
Oh, please. Beauty before age.
I would agree with you, Leo. Mrs. Kendall?
Yes, that's Mrs. Kendall, Mrs. Thomas Kendall, and my husband is currently interned in Island Pond Cemetery. I do also feel as though this does seem to be a vendetta against the pet cemetery issue and the supporters. For you to cut funding for human cemeteries as well and the care of our deceased loved ones, I just find it appalling. I really do.
Further debate, Mr. Kakounis?
Thank you. I agree 100%. Obviously, there's sentiment in this room, people were displeased with the action on the pet cemetery, and this action really has no merit whatsoever. We have an excellent cemetery director. She does a wonderful job maintaining, and so does her staff, our cemeteries, every single one of them. And, you know, we created the arboretum earlier. This is just the way that our founding fathers and mothers put into place of how we're going to operate. We fund the revolving fund ahead of time, and then as the lots are sold, the money gets returned back into it again. Really, please do not vote for this amendment.
Further debate on the amendment? Yes, sir.
Sandy McClarty, East Harwich. The main reason given or justification for the $100,000 was to spray the trees for moths and other chemicals that need to be sprayed. My wife and I are beekeepers, and that spray kills bees, and so I would like people to consider all of this spraying for invasive species and moths that we don't want are killing good bugs as well, and maybe they're all good.
Any further debate on the amendment? Looks like you're ready for a vote, unless, are you up to speak, sir?
I'm up to speak, yes, but it's not on that particular-
Okay, fine. I don't want to encourage anybody at this hour. So, the amendment is to reduce the cemetery line on spending limit from $100,000 to $40,000. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no. And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion fails. So we're back on the main motion, which is to accept and adopt as printed with the following change, removing the pet burial ground, $140,000 available for expenditure. Any further debate on the main motion? Hearing none, I'm going to put it to a vote. All those in favor of the main motion, so signify by saying aye.
Whoa.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. So now we're on Article 66. Stabilization Fund. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the stabilization fund and act fully thereon. Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that the sum of $550,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
So the motion under Article 66 is accept and adopt and the sum of $550,000 be transferred from free cash into the stabilization fund. Any debate? Mr. Clark?
The book actually had indicated that it was $400,000 going in there. Because we had a very mild winter, we took the leftover money from the winter and put it into that, so we increased the amount going into stabilization because of a mild winter.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am? You got to use the mic. Thank you.
I don't know what O P E B stands for.
Yeah, we're not on that article. But we'll tell you when we get there.
Okay.
We're on 66. I wish we were on O-PED, but we, we got to do this one first. Any further debate on 66? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, the motion is accept and adopt, the sum is $550,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. All those in favor of the motion has read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Here it is, O-PED. And Mr. DeCosta will explain it to you. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the O-PED Trust Fund and act fully thereon. Mr. DeCosta?
Let's see, other post-employment benefits. I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that the sum of $550,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Okay, so 67 is accept and adopt, and the sum is likewise $550,000 to be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Any debate? Mr. Conroy?
Hi, sorry. I think I heard Mr. Clark say yesterday, this is part of a $40 million unfunded liability. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if the schools are proportional to this, that'd be almost another $30 million. So are you guys saying that we've got a $65, $70 million unfunded liability? When you combine the schools and the operating budget? I mean, the operating issue here?
The liability for the town, the town organization is about $42 million. We have $3 million that's in towards that liability. The schools, believe it or not, because they're a newer organization, their liability, even though there are many more employees, they don't have as many retirees. When they merged, we absorbed the retirees for the schools. So their liability isn't as great, and I don't have that number off the top of my head.
All I'd say is, you know, we need a lot of transparency on this, and this has to be factored into the way we vote on all these topics over the next few years because this is a budget breaker.
Any further debate on the motion under 67? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Excuse me. All those in favor of the motion has read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 68. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior years as provided for in Chapter 44, Section 64. Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted and that the sum of $90.70 be transferred from the Water Enterprise Fund, the sum of $401.65 be transferred from the Brooks Metal Trust Fund, and the sum of $378 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Okay, the motion seeks to pay the unpaid bills that are listed in your warrant. There are three bills there. This requires a four-fifths majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion has read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. So we're now on Article 69. Before I do that, I'd like to just take a second and thank the members of the Finance Committee. I know the pay has been good again this year. Appreciate it. I also want to thank Mr. DeCosta, who's coming off the Finance Committee, he's been on there for many years, done a great job. I appreciate Dana's efforts. Also like to thank Julie Kavanaugh, Chair of our Board of Selectmen, who's coming off. Thank you, Julie. So we've got the herring fisheries, and we don't have Rich Houston. We'll have to get by without him. See what action the town will take in regard to the herring fisheries and act fully thereon. Mr. DeCosta?
I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
So the motion is accept and adopt on Article 69. Mr. DeCosta?
This is short, it's quick.
It better be short.
The Finance Committee is glad this customary and traditional article is thoughtfully placed at the end of each warrant by the Board of Selectmen. Gives us a chance to reflect on our town. At last count of the 351 towns in Massachusetts, 296 of them still practice the town meeting form of government like we do here in Harwich. But this article sets us apart. This article is uniquely Harwich. I've heard we have installed the new automated fish counter on the fish ladders at Bell's Neck. It's good to have an accurate count. I know the town clerk is always grateful when at least 150 registered voters wander into the community center each year to be counted as a quorum so that we can have our town meeting. The members of the Finance Committee, thank you for coming here and doing the business of the town. We have seen this year some issues can be decided by just one vote, and the Finance can remind you that that person, just a few seats over from you, who argued so passionately against your article this year, might be the one arguing passionately for your article next year. In Harwich, we take our votes, and we close our books, and we leave those votes behind to depart as friends. I am thankful to you all, and it has been my honor and privilege to serve you.
Thank you, Dana. Any further debate on Article 69? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article 69, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The article passes. I recognize Mr. Brown for making a motion to dissolve the 2019 annual town meeting. Do I hear a second? All those in favor of dissolution of the meeting, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Meeting's adjourned, all those opposed may remain.
Aye. Aye, and ask me, Harvey.